...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this hope with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the role Clerk Manley.
Bellinger.
Here.
Docket. Zelenak.
Present.
Shockley.
Here.
Manley, here. Otto. Here. Chick. Here.
Okay. So you have the agenda before you. Are there any, um, any changes anybody needs to make or requests? Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda?
Also.
Okay.
Support.
Okay, so we have a motion by Chick and support by Manley to adopt the balance of the agenda. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I have some questions to ask here. Oh, about the special election, did we get anywhere on this?
Still nothing from the county on their ballots. They're doing training like the last few weeks, so it hasn't been their priority. But Christina is on them about it. And I've called them too, and they said they don't have it yet, so.
Okay, how about the...
Okay, thank you.
What is that? Which one was that? The school or...
Um, we did get the school. I don't have that number on me. I was waiting to get it all together.
Oh, I thought you said you would put it in my box when you got it.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the table, um, to adopt the balance of the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Marley.
Yes? Oh, you have something?
Yes. When are we gonna address this?
Oh, um, after the call to the public?
Okay. All right, thank you.
What is this?
What was handed out to us.
And who gave it to us?
I hope...
Steven?
Mr. Ains.
I didn't get a chance to read what was handed out. I don't like it when we get stuff that we haven't had time to look at.
It was requested because we did not have the closed session this evening. And it was requested to talk about it during the board meeting.
I still think that we should have time to digest things.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that will be brought up after a call to the public.
All right, thank you.
My understanding at board member comments, clarifications, okay. So all in favor of adopting the balance of the agenda, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. It's adopted. Now we have an opportunity for call to the public. Please come up, state your name and your address. And you have about three minutes to speak to us. I won't be rude and cut you off, but, um, but please try to keep it to three minutes. And keep it to agenda items or any, anything you'd like to share with us would be great. And address your comments to the supervisor, please. Thank you. Anyone, would anyone like to come up and share anything? Good evening.
Hello. We are Lynn and Steve Lyman of 134 Lakeview.
Ah, you're gonna have to speak into the...
Yep, I thought I was. Yeah, you can take it out and hold it right up to your mouth there.
We are Lynn and Steve Lyman of 134 Lakeview Drive, which is in the Shrum subdivision. About a week ago, we received a letter from Northfield Township stating that they were going to change the name of our street from Lakeview Drive to, which is one word, to Lakeview, two words, Ave. And we'd like to know why. I mean, the letter says, because of an old plat map, but it's been Lakeview Drive for over fifty years that I know of, because I've lived in the neighborhood that long.
Okay.
So why are we doing this?
Okay. We'll have an opportunity to address that after the call to the public unless you have an answer for that, Mr. Ains?
I don't.
Not right now? Okay.
I have a comment about that. I don't think we have anything to say about Horseshoe Lakes up. I mean, it's...
Northfield Township?
I know, but I don't think we have anything to say about their streets and what they do there.
According to this letter, the county has already been notified by the township to change the street name.
This letter is from someone named Mary Byrd.
She works for the township, but we don't have anything to do with Horseshoe Lakes.
That comes out of the assessment office?
So where is our forum? Where is our forum to complain about this? Or to at least get answers?
Well, you can complain here.
Okay. Right, we can look...
But it's, it's a legal...
Is it a township not controlled by this board?
Yes. You can complain to it here.
Okay, so...
I would like an answer though. Does the operation of this township, is it, or is it not controlled by its board?
I can't hear you.
Um, sir, sir, this isn't a question and answer time. However, we will make every effort to look into all of the fine points of this and get back to you on how it originated and why it's happening at this time. We, we haven't been briefed on it, and we don't really have that background at this time.
Before the record, your name is on this letter.
That's fine.
And also, you're saying you'll discuss it later. Will we have an opportunity then to address it at that time if we don't have understanding of why this is happening?
Let's, let's get together and talk about it, yes. Well, I don't have the background, all the background information on it tonight, so, but I can have that for you when we, when we meet.
According to this letter, and September, as dated September 12th, the Washtenaw County has already been notified that this street name change is happening. I don't understand how people could do that without letting people that live on the street know ahead of time and have a voice on whether or not that happens.
Oops, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Ah, you have, your mic's not on.
I'm happy to read the letter.
Okay, thank you.
Regarding the correct name and spelling of Lakeview, two words, Avenue, it has come to our attention that your street signage does not match the recorded subdivision, Shrum Horseshoe Lake subdivision, as recorded on Liber Five, page forty-two, Washtenaw County records. The correct spelling of the street name is Lakeview, two words, Avenue. In close, please find a copy of the recorded subdivision plat for your convenience. Washtenaw County GIS Mapping IT Department has been contacted to correct their website from Lakeview, one word, Drive, to Lakeview, two words, Ave. Please accept this letter as notification to the Horseshoe Lake Corporation. Please take all appropriate actions to effect this correction, including notifying all residents concerned of the correction. If you should have any further questions, please don't hesitate to contact Mary Byrd.
Mary Byrd.
Thank you. So, I'm sorry, so your issue would be that everyone affected by that change, would, they would have to change all of their paperwork and all of the...
Yeah, so my mortgage is in the wrong address, my cars are in the wrong address?
Can I address it since we're talking?
Go ahead, Ms. Otto.
I had a, um, a friend of mine also lives on Lakeview Drive, and she contacted me. And I reached out to Mary Byrd, and basically, um, she did say, she was also irate about it, and that you guys have to change your driver's license, your voter ID cards, that type of thing.
Mortgages, insurance.
So I did reach back out to her, and I said, okay, do the deed, you know, to change a deed and all that is very hard. So I said, what do they have to do? Do they have to change the deeds? Do they have to, you know, what do they have to change? And she said, as far as she knows, you do not have to, um, she says, I don't believe so. They will, they could correct it if they want, but the cost would probably not warrant the action. It would be corrected the next time that, that they record a new deed, if they sell or put it in a trust, life estate. I'll double check with Washtenaw County just to verify myself and felt that wouldn't hurt anything as well. So that's what she told me.
But if you're gonna change our address, that's the mailing address. So when that becomes Lakeview Ave, what is the post office gonna do with all of my stuff that's addressed to Lakeview Drive?
Well, we can check into the ramifications of all this and see if there's a Plan B.
It says to contact the Horseshoe Lake Association. Have you done that? That's what you did.
No, the letter was sent to the association. It says to contact Mary Byrd, but your office hours are not very conducive to people who work.
Right. Thank you.
Marley got a copy of it. She should know about this, but I have a question also about why did they not give people an opportunity? You could change the plat map easier than everybody living on that street can change their address on every address, every correspondence, every title, driver's license, everything that we live by. I bought a house on this address. I did not buy a house on Lakeview Avenue.
Right, that's why, well, we can look into Plan B and see, see what might be of benefit. Thank you. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak at this point? Thank you.
Hi, David Gordon, 5558 Hellner. I just wanted to say I'm very excited to see that the Land Preservation Committee is here with their presentation tonight. I've looked at it online. It looks excellent, simple, straightforward. I hope that they get the support from the board to continue this, and it's the beginning of some momentum. Preservation is not the enemy of economic growth. They partner together. I think probably our downtown would be more attractive had we had a preservation committee sixty, seventy years ago and possibly saved some of the buildings that I see in old photographs from downtown that look very charming. This isn't part of saving property, buildings per se, but the natural areas that people value so much in this community, action needs to be taken to protect them from, or else they'll be gone. So I hope this is the beginning of a process that leads to us joining the other communities that surround us that are working on land preservation and making it available to the farming community in our, in our township. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chuck, excuse me, Chuck Steyer, 766 Mile Road. A couple things. Number one, um, there was an article, a letter to the editor in the Current, um, two papers ago, I think, from a person locally, a taxpayer, that raised questions as to why we're having trouble attracting businesses and some of the frustrations that businesses face and da-da-da-da-da. I would like to suggest, and I have suggested before, that as I'm standing here, over the supervisor's head is a violation of the ordinance, the certificate of occupancy requirements that would have been required if this room was being finished as part of a normal business. And as I have pointed out before at calls to the public, I think that it's kind of foolish that we have people coming in to complain about the frustrations that they're going through, that have to stare at a violation on the township's property. And nothing's been done to fix that, and it would take a $2.59 cover at a Home Depot being put over that hole in the wall. That might not be the correct fix for it, but at least it would get rid of the monument to the township's foolishness. The, the other thing is that we do not, the township does not, I understand the post office, the federal government is not bound by our ordinances. I understand that the school is not bound by our sign laws and ordinances. I don't think that the township is exempt from the ordinances and laws that they pass. And I don't, if you wanna know why businesses are going elsewhere and not coming here, the best thing you could do as a board is to pass a resolution that the township will follow all laws and ordinances that apply to taxpayers and businesses in the jurisdiction. I, I think that makes perfect sense to me, it, it's what should be being done, but we have never followed that. The county does. The county Parks Department had to come before the Planning Commission when they got the nature park approved that went in on Seven Mile Road at Nalar.
Fifteen seconds, Mr. ...
But we have not, we've not followed those same rules. The other thing is we, at a previous meeting recently, you overrode the snow remover requirement on the sidewalk on Barker Road. I think if we are going to forgive or change or alter an existing ordinance, that we should review the ordinance to see if we should be changing it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, let's see if we have everyone else here. Save it for comments. Do we have anyone else who would like to make a comment at this time? Seeing no one, Ms. Manley has a comment to one of the comments.
Yeah, Mr. Steyer, I know you did bring this up with me, actually, and in January, I did speak with Kurt about it, and I thought I addressed you with it too. It says the open electrical boxes in the boardroom appear to be low voltage and is not a problem. So Kurt Weiland did address the boxes in here. I agree, they should be covered for cosmetic purposes, but it's not a code violation, so.
Thank you. Do we have any other board member comments to any of the calls to the public, I mean, the public comments at this time? Oh, go ahead, Ms. Zelenak.
So some of you may know, we have an offsite, which is gonna be onsite here on Thursday. One of the items that I think is important and will bring up at that is communication. Communication to our residents, communication amongst ourselves. And I think the Horseshoe Lake road change might be one of them that would have been good to have known about, known all the options, known why it was being changed, what options were available. I mean, I don't know the implications at this point in time, but again, I think communication amongst ourselves and with our residents is very important, and we need to get better at it. The other item is just in general about ordinances. I think there, it's important to have them. I think it's important that they be enforced. I think we need to look at our processes to see where and make sure we're best in practices and where we can get better. Again, this is an item that I will bring up at the Thursday meeting, because I think it's important as well. I do thank the public for coming out and expressing their concerns, be it positive or negative, because that's the only way we will be able to address them and get better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Any other board member comments for this?
A board member comment.
Okay, Mr. Docket, go ahead.
All the reason I asked at the last meeting about the unemployment insurance, as far as I know, the township does not pay into unemployment insurance. If somebody works for the town, the reason being that we never lay anybody off, almost never. So when I seen that in eleven hundred and some dollars, whatever it was, I thought that Mr. Green was drawn unemployment. And I happen to know that Mr. Green is selling real estate for a real estate one. So that is why I brought it up. Now, nobody seemed to know about that we don't pay unemployment, but the manager did send me something that said that you checked into it. And the reason we had to pay is because one of our police officers left and went to work for somebody else, got laid off there, and then the unemployment, the state unemployment company goes back and collects from us, because I guess that's the way it works. So, did I understand that correctly?
If I can respond, yeah. I had talked to you, since that meeting, I was getting mixed up between the unemployment and the workers' comp. So the workers' comp, you do pay a percentage of the payroll. And unemployment, it's only if there's a claim. I did speak to the chief, it's one of his employees, and apparently, the individual had worked here as a on-call paid firefighter, but also had worked elsewhere. And my understanding was that there was a change. Now, I could be mixed up, because I don't have any direct involvement with the police fire department, but it might have been the other way around, it might have been the police. But I will ask the chief to put something in writing and clarify it for you.
Ms. Otto?
So I will read it from an email that was from Christina. And it was, actually, it was to Christina from Yvette Patrick, who's our controller. Prior to 1972, government entities and many nonprofit organizations were not covered under the federal state employment security system. Effective January first, 1972, employees of these organizations became eligible for unemployment benefits on the same basis as other employees, and these organizations became liable for payment of these unemployment benefits. In Michigan, governmental entities, 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations, and Indian tribes or tribunal units may elect to reimburse the unemployment trust fund dollar for dollar, dollar for dollar for benefits paid to their employees rather than pay the unemployment tax, payroll tax. Such employers do not pay the F U T A tax or contribute towards the administration of the state's employment security programs. These entities are known as reimbursing employers. So basically, we are a reimbursing employer, and we were, from what I understand, we were told by the court system or by the state of Michigan that we had to pay this to the gentleman. So that's why it was on there.
I have no problem with that, but I just wanted to understand what was happening, because we don't pay into it. I, if I were, I'm an employer...
No, but we have to pay it, one way or another.
No, we don't pay unless somebody draws it.
That's right. That's exactly what, and that's what happened here. Normally, we would not have paid it...
But he wasn't working for us. He went somewhere else, and then we still had to pay.
Exactly. It was court ordered.
Okay. All right. So we have another, another item that we were going to deal with here at the board member clarifications time. And Mr. Ains left us some information at our seats about, looks like off-street parking and loading and abandoned vehicles and junk vehicles. And Mr. Ains, would you like to speak to why you put, you know, you provided this information? And then Mr. Mainz has some comments also about an article that's been in the news, so.
The board had asked me to address parts of this. I don't have any direct knowledge of the issue that was in the paper. And that one I was given or direction from the attorneys to not talk to. However, in general, what I've been asked to do by the board is to respond to the concept of code enforcement, and in particular, to the junk car ordinances. What I've given to you this evening at your desk, and the only reason you got it tonight, Mr. Docket, was because I wasn't asked for it till today. But what I've given you is three other townships that are in the area, sections of their zoning code, which outlines their provisions for junk vehicles and how it's defined. And each of them has a little bit difference, but basically, if it's an unlicensed vehicle for a certain period of time, it is considered to be a junk vehicle and therefore subject to code enforcement. It's not new to me. In each community I've served in over the last forty years, this has been a continuing issue. When I went online today, I saw articles in Florida and New York and Wisconsin and so forth. It's, it's across the country. This is an ongoing, common thing that you have code enforcement. How it's implemented is often up to the individual community. But the way your ordinances are written, they are very much like the ones that are around you, Green Oaks, Brighton, and some of the others. And, you know, if you want further research, I can do that. But with that, I would like to defer it to the attorney who is prepared to discuss that particular case.
Thank you, Mr. Ains. Go ahead, Mr. Mainz.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Our office was just asked to briefly give the board an update about the matter in question out on East North Territorial. This matter was initiated by the issuance of a ticket by the former code enforcement officer for the township to enforce the township's inoperable motor vehicle ordinance. The matter came to our office as a part of our twice monthly district court prosecution of tickets. Every month, we go down to, or twice a month, we go down to Chelsea to prosecute any traffic tickets that are issued by the police department and any zoning tickets that may be issued by the code enforcement officer. As a part of this prosecution in particular, the township would have been entitled to an order to remove all non-conforming vehicles from the site. Our office worked with township staff to reach an agreement that would allow for removal in a more reasonable period of time. This agreement was approved by the defendant, put on the record before the judge, and entered by the court. As a general matter, historically, due to the volume of prosecutions that we generally handle, we generally handle a hundred or more a year. We haven't generally reported on these prosecutions to the board. Be happy to do so. It's kind of a part of our work that doesn't get heard about a whole lot, but takes up a fair amount of time. If the board would like for us to report on these more regularly, we'd be more than happy to do that. But this was not a circuit court action like the one that the board has authorized with regard to Shady Beach. This was a ticket-driven action initiated by township staff and prosecuted by our office as a matter of general course.
Ms. Otto?
So explain to the public what it means to have a speeding ticket as opposed to an ordinance officer citation. What's the difference?
As a practical matter, the difference is relatively small with regard to potential penalties. Both of them are what are known as civil infractions as opposed to misdemeanors. They're not criminal offenses. They're just punishable by a fine, the same way as like a parking ticket would be or a speed ticket would be. The one substantial difference is, in a speed ticket case, there's really no conduct that needs to be enjoined, no situation that needs to be remedied. Situation's already remedied by effectuating the traffic stop. In the case of zoning violations, there's often an order which enters as a part of the prosecution to make sure that whatever the conduct was that was causing the violation gets remedied. And that's essentially what this consent judgment was that entered in the matter was a remediating order to make sure that the problem wasn't gonna continue to recur, that it was gonna be fixed. Is that responsive to your question?
Thank you. Do any of the other board members have a question for Mr. Mainz? Mr. Docket?
I have no question. I have a statement. I'm reading about these emails that went around about this. Marilyn, I'm sorry, Marlene said that she, that she didn't wanna embarrass Mr., I guess you say his name is, how do you say his name?
Does that?
Does it? She said she does not know if he was a victim of the medium, of the media, or an active participant of the media. No, Marilyn, he is a victim of the Northfield Township, in my opinion. You wanna take away the guy's 401K and drag him through the court system? I, I don't think that's fair. And I, I think that we certainly should have been notified. As far as I know, nobody on this board was notified of this. As far as I know, nobody on this board was notified of this. I wasn't. I don't know if anybody else was. But I would say that Kathy Manley said, in her email, that this is, Kathy Manley said, "When did all this happen?" Now, that's an honest statement for any of us on the board here, as far as I'm concerned. Jackie Otto said, "I do not recall our attorney ever providing the board an update on this situation." I understand that we were advised," is what Jackie said, "but who is the 'we'?" Well, that's an honest statement, I don't know anything, I don't know that. Steven Ayers says that the attorney has advised us to, in this matter, and is still, it's still in the court system, and Northfield Township is not permitted to comment on this. The township attorney will prepare a confidential attorney-client letter to send to the board. Now, in plain English, that means, once the board gets it, we can't talk about it. Shame on you, Mr. Township Manager. That's no way to handle this. I don't like it. So, I just, I don't think it was fair. I think that we should have known about it, and I think if our attorney is trying to keep us from knowing about this stuff, we should be looking for a new attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dockett. I, go ahead, Ms. Alnack.
So, Mr. Mainz, could you, one thing you mentioned in your explanation is that you could give us a list, I think that would be good to have, going forward, so I'd like to have that. Again, more communication, I think, is better. And also, I don't know how much you can tell, but when did this case start?
Sure. My, now, I wasn't really involved in the matter until it, until the ticket was issued, and it came, I essentially get a notice to appear for pre-trials for these prosecutions that we do. So, that was what I got for this matter. The ticket, there were two tickets issued, one was issued in May of 2016, the other one was issued in August of 2016. It's my understanding from review of the file that was done by township staff, that the initial enforcement in this matter actually occurred back in 2014, shortly after the ordinance in question was passed. So, it's my understanding that there was attempt to remedy the situation at least as early as 2014, before a ticket was finally issued by Bill Lenahan in 2016, and then a consent judgment was eventually reached, as a part of the district court prosecutions with our office, in June of 2017. So, it was about three years' worth of trying to get compliance before the consent judgment was finally entered.
Ms. Bellinger.
No, I, the question then, is, when was this ordinance regarding these vehicles passed initially?
Passed in 2014.
This is curious to me. And this was passed for the reason of addressing particularly this situation?
I don't know the answer to that, I don't think so.
Ms. Otto.
So, a couple of things I want people to understand. When, when are we contacted in regards to a, when the code enforcement officer is contacted? What, how, and when are we contacted? Does he proactively go out? Or is it, is it, are we contacted first, and then he goes out?
We, meaning what?
The township.
The township?
The board.
So, no, not the board, I'm not talking about the board, I'm talking about its complaint, that's what I'm trying to get to. It's complaint-driven. So, I think the public needs to understand is that we don't proactively go out and seek to see if these ordinances are not being followed. It's complaint-driven, so evidently, there might have been a complaint here, I don't know, but that was probably the only way we would have known about it. Second thing I wanted to ask is consent judgment. The township doesn't actually take somebody to court because of the ordinance not being followed, that because they didn't respond to the ticket, is that why the consent judgment was put into place?
Correct. So, when a ticket is issued, it's essentially a complaint. Like, like a complaint in a civil case would be, you know, a large written document, a ticket's essentially a complaint that begins a case. If it's simply paid by the person who it's addressed to, like anybody might pay a traffic ticket, then there's no, there's no court event. It's only when, it's only when they're contested that there's actually, has to be some eventual resolution of the matter, which the consent judgment was in this case.
I have one more, sorry.
No, fine.
I also want to respond to Mr. Dockett, because I want to read exactly what I said. The board needs to be aware that there is an issue. I don't recall his name being on the ordinance officer's report, so that's exactly what I read, that I wrote.
Okay, right. I would like to say that it was on the second code enforcement officer report that we got from Mr. Rankin. And we did get a, kind of a timeline flow chart, I believe, when he was discussing the process, and he was before us for a presentation. So, there was some information there. When we get a complaint, it can come in by internet, phone call, it can, someone can come in and file a complaint, and Mr. Rankin takes care of them, or he goes out and investigates. Like, I received several phone calls myself, and I turn them over, lots of times, I'll go look at the situation myself, so I have something to say, but I'll turn them over to Mr. Rankin, and he goes out, and he can, he has the authority to actually follow up with them, and I don't. So, he will take, if he needs to, take pictures, and he starts a file on it, and then he attempts to contact the owner and get compliance. And he's, he's very good at dealing with people. The whole goal here is to get compliance and not write tickets, you know? So, he really works very hard to get compliance. And it can take some time, you know, because he's only in once, one day a week, sometimes twice a week, so it can take some time to get through the process, and especially when a letter has to go out, and you have to wait ten days, and make sure they got it, and then check on things again. It can take some time to get compliance. But he works very hard at that, to improve the township for all of us. Go ahead, Ms. Manley.
I just want to make a quick point to Mr. Dockett, that this has been going on since 2014, so we can't answer why you weren't notified before that. I don't know how Mr. Lenahan and Mr. Fink did it, if you guys were notified from the code enforcement officer, but that's something that we've been working on lately, so moving forward, I think we're doing a better job. For the previous three years, I, we can't answer why you weren't aware of it.
The owner of the place says that Marlene sent him a letter, so she knew about it.
Right.
Why didn't we know about it? And this is what you wrote, Jackie, I'm reading it here. Says Jackie Otto, "I don't recall our attorney ever providing us an update on this situation. I understand that we were advised, but who was 'we'?" Did you write this?
That the attorney advised us not to talk about it. That's what I meant. I haven't seen, I don't, I've tried to pull every one of them out that I-
Well, it was, it was to her.
Yeah, he advised us not to talk about it.
Well, I believe we should.
Okay, Ms. Chick.
I just wanted to comment that we hadn't been getting reports from the ordinance officer prior till we requested them in 2016. So, yeah, so that's why we hadn't gotten anything. But I think it's important that, at the point where a complaint goes to the attorney, is when we should get some information, because in this instance, we were all caught by surprise, and that was uncomfortable, and we want to be able to answer people's questions, and we couldn't.
Right, us too. Mr. Mainz, you have some comments you'd like to add?
Just so that I'm clear about this, does the board want updates on everything that we prosecute, including traffic tickets, or you're just looking for zoning ordinance tickets written by the code officer?
I can answer that.
I think we should talk about this at our board retreat.
I, okay. I would like, I would like to move to direct our township attorney, which includes Mr. Burns, and any other attorney employed by the township, to provide in writing to every board member, ever, excuse me, to provide writing, in writing, to every board member, a synopsis of the case that they are working on. That includes a brief description of the case and progress of each. This information is to be delivered on the first of each month to the township manager, to be delivered to each board member no later than forty-eight hours after the receipt of such information. Effective date of the first submission of the document will be November 1st, 2017. Can I get a second on that?
I'll support that, we should be discussing this.
Okay, so we have a motion, but that's a long motion, Mr.-
I have a copy, will you take it down to, will you give that to her?
Do you have a copy for all of us?
Yes, well, but I didn't get to see this ahead of time, Mr. Dockett. And here we are going to vote on it.
Too bad. We're going to vote on it because, because I made a, I made it, and we got a second, so we're going to vote. I don't know if it's going to pass, but we're going to vote.
Well, we ought to discuss, it's kind of what we're already discussing.
Okay, so he's made a motion, and we have a second, so now's the time to discuss the motion.
Can somebody read it again?
Yes. You want me to read it? Oh, okay. You know, it really helps when we get these things ahead of time, so that we can all be prepared.
Too bad. Too bad I was in a hurry. Sorry. That's what you say.
Mr. Dockett moves to direct the township attorneys, which includes Mr. Burns and any other attorney employed by the township, to provide in writing to every board member a monthly synopsis of cases they are working on, that includes a brief description of the case and progress of each. This information is to be delivered by the first of each month to the township manager, to be delivered to each board member no later than forty-eight hours after receipt of such information. Effective date for the first submission of documents will be November 1st, 2017. So, that is the motion, and we, now we have an opportunity to discuss that.
I would assume that we would maybe specify this is for Northfield-related cases. I would hope that that's probably, maybe that's just assumed.
Yeah, I don't want anybody else's cases, thank you.
Right. So, Mr. Dockett, since you were the maker of the motion, you get to speak first. Do you have anything more to say?
No, I, yes, I was very embarrassed with probably fifteen calls, and people coming in my store, asking me about this particular one, about the man with all the cars. I said, "I'm sorry, but I don't know anything about this." They said, "Well, it's in the paper, and it's on TV, why don't you know about it? You're on the board, you're supposed to be my representative." I don't think that's fair, for us to not know about this. Who, does anyone know about it? I mean, it's on there, no one knows about it. This is BS, that's what it is. You know, Marlene, you want to run everything, you want to take care of everything, you know, they threw you off the chair of the planning commission, and, you know, it's too bad we can't do the same thing.
Can we stay on topic?
Yeah, stay on topic, yes.
Well, I mean, let's face it.
I will hold my discussion to the board retreat.
Okay. Mr. Mainz, in reading the motion, are you clear on what you would be providing us? And is, do you have any questions?
The only, the only real question I would have is, as I say, we handle as many as ten-
I can't hear you.
Sure. We handle as many as ten to fifteen traffic ticket prosecutions, which are civil infractions or misdemeanors every month, which, you know, take the form of sometimes plea deals, sometimes pleas straight up, very rarely trials. But the volume of those minor matters far, far exceeds the more significant matters that we handle for the township. If the board would like for us to report on those too, we're happy to do that, but I just wanted to know in terms of what you're, what you're expecting for us to produce, whether you want all those covered as well. Happy to do it, but, you know, we have two currently pending matters, one in circuit court, and one in the Michigan Tax Tribunal, which I expect will probably take all the remainder of this year, whereas over the same period of time, save for now, until December, I would expect to probably handle somewhere between twenty and thirty traffic tickets.
Okay, Ms. Chick.
I personally would like to study the motion, I haven't seen it, I'd like to read it. I would prefer that we table it until after the retreat, when we have time to discuss it.
Okay, Ms. Otto.
I don't want to know about speeding tickets.
I don't either.
Just FYI, because they are, they are what they are. But I would like to know about court, anything to deal with code enforcement. I think on a monthly basis, it might be too much. It might be too much reporting. I would agree to a quarterly update, but I, I think, I think you're going to get the same old, the same old every single month, because the cases don't move fast enough.
Any, any, no. I, at the least, I would agree with Ms. Otto for quarterly. We receive quarterlies from our zoning administrator, we get monthlies from Mary Bird from building. My concern about it is that this is a small town, if there's names associated with anything going through anything. And my one comment in the one email was that I think it's important that we protect the reputation of our citizens in the township, and that's why I didn't think it was, be appropriate to be talking about it, certain cases in public. And that's why I had, at one point, the name blacked out of the code enforcement report that went into the packet for the public. So, there's, I think, I think we need time to consider how we want this to be handled, and I would favor discussing this again on Thursday, and coming up with some sort of resolution on it, on what we want to have from Mr. Mainz. Ms. Bellinger.
We do need to be better informed on what is going, ongoing. Obviously, traffic tickets are something we really don't have an interest or concern with, but we need to, we should have known, had a background on this at least. You know, I don't know whether that, why that wasn't provided to us, and if there's other cases that are kind of in limbo, that maybe we should know about, in case something of this nature breaks out again, you know, media-wise. If you want to do a quarterly, maybe that's okay, but if there's anything newsworthy, new, or of interest, we need to be getting information accordingly, you know, timely, related to that, maybe an extra, you know, document of information, or so forth. I mean, I'm okay to vote on something tonight that says that the board should be receiving information. I'm also okay if you want to try to reword something and tie it up maybe Thursday. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Mainz.
I have two very brief things. The first thing is, just as a matter of perspective, I think in the time from 2014 to the present, I think that there's been two zoning tickets that have come up for prosecution. So, over the course of four years, this has been one of two, I believe. The second item, just to respond to Trustee Bellinger, or answer the implied question, until the news article came out on this one, there was nothing newsworthy about it. It's just a prosecution for municipal civil infraction, just like a speed ticket. There was nothing about this one to distinguish it as being anything different from just normal garden-variety code enforcement prosecution of a ticket. I've done, I had a very similar case to this in Unidella Township, when I first started out as an attorney. And that's all it was, it was just a prosecution, nothing came of it. So, it's, you know, it's, sometimes it's easy to look at these matters in hindsight and say, "Oh gee, you know, obviously, this is a big one," but at the time, nothing distinguished it as being particularly remarkable. For instance, the other matter we had was a fence line. For instance, the other matter we had was a fence line infringement, which I suppose that if the person had gotten worked up sufficiently about it and had gone to the press and said, "Gee, isn't this horrible? They're making me tear my fence down," that one would have been newsworthy as well. It just didn't happen. But we're happy to report on whatever the township board would like for us to report on. We don't want you to not be informed. The only reason why we didn't was because, from our perspective legally, it's the same as any other civil infraction prosecution, which we've never reported on historically, so, but we're happy to do so.
Okay, Ms. Chick.
Real quickly, I understand what Mr. Mainz is saying, that until it hit the newspaper, that, you know, everybody was unaware, but at the point it hit the newspaper, us as board members, we got no information quickly, for a couple of days, anyway. I mean, even background information, yeah, even after it was out, we're still asking each other questions and not getting information. So, at that point, I don't know where it's going to come from. If something does hit like that, then please, whoever, Mr. Manager, you know, send something out so everybody's aware of the details.
Right, and Mr. Ains, go ahead to explain your situation.
First I became aware of this, since this predated me by about two years being here, was when I got the call from one of the TV reporters, and then I had another one show up in the front lobby, and then I had a newspaper reporter show up in the front lobby, and I contacted the board's attorney to get advice on how I should proceed. Since I had no direct knowledge, I could not share anything, and I did not want to interfere with the process that had been going on already. And that's when our attorneys indicated that I should basically say that I would, could not make any comment, but refer any questions to your attorney. And that's what I did. And so, if any of the board had asked me, you know, I didn't have anything to share with you because I didn't have any knowledge of this, so I would have referred you to the attorney anyway. You know, I've only been here seven weeks.
Yeah. I can say, I received an email Monday after close of date from somebody who was upset that they had read something on social media. Well, there's Facebook out there. There's all sorts of blogs going on. So, I got an email about that. The next morning, I called Mr. Mainz about it and said that there must have been a news article gone out, and I had had some conversations or some back and forth, which you saw in the article that I was quoted, but that was about all there was, the back and forth I had with that individual who published the article. So, anyway, I think it would be appropriate for us to talk about it at our retreat.
I have just a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
I'm okay with starting out monthly, to see if we want it monthly, and then moving to quarterly if we find that monthly is not efficient, not providing any additional information. And then, would this information be considered client attorney privilege?
It would be because it would be updated on pending litigation.
Okay. So, then, we wouldn't have to worry about it getting out necessarily to the public and everybody knowing who's who and who's what and other people's business.
Yeah. However, I have to say that as soon as we received this attorney-client privilege communication about this one case, I took it over to Mr. Dockett, who refused to accept it because he wanted to talk about it without the background.
I can talk about it, even if it's attorney-client, I can talk about it.
But there was a lot of information that you were not aware of.
And I didn't do it because for two years, we don't know anything. Twenty-four hours after it's on the TV, you're up to my place giving, "I'm going to give you this because you can't talk about it." This is from the attorney.
No, I was dropping it off.
I'm not going to pull up with that. You're not going to do that to me. You're not going to do that to me.
I guess we have a motion on the table.
Well, well, let's get with it.
We have a motion on the table.
But you're not going to do that to me. I'm not going to have that. I'm going to talk about it.
Okay, are we ready to vote on the motion that Mr. Dockett made?
Do we, has there been amendments to the motion, or is it as presented?
We do not have amendment at this time.
Ask if there's any amendments to the motion, or is it as presented?
As presented.
Is there any amendments we wish to add regarding, is it monthly or quarterly?
You're welcome to make an amendment if you'd like. Would anyone like to make an amendment to the motion?
I would like to see it go to quarterly instead of monthly.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Otto to have a quarterly.
Or as deemed that, you know, or as needed.
I accept a friendly amendment.
If we need to have it sooner, you know, if actions warrant it that we need to have it sooner, then we get it sooner, but it is going to be in a confidential format, so.
I support.
I accept your friendly amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Otto and support by Ms. Bellinger for, to amend to quarterly. We have any discussion on this one, then? I would like to mention that anything that's pending in Circuit Court, we do get briefings on this in special meetings if anything comes up. That would be less than three months out, so. Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Otto and support by Ms. Bellinger.
If I may, just for clarification, to include traffic tickets or no?
No.
Okay.
I think we should make that amendment as well, is to exclude traffic tickets.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
To exclude traffic tickets.
I support.
So, we have a motion by Ms. Otto and support by Ms. Bellinger to get quarterly reports from the township attorney to excluding traffic tickets.
Excluding traffic tickets. So, I think it's confusing. You have two motions, two amendments. Maybe we should vote on the first amendment.
The first, okay.
And then, the second amendment was to exclude traffic tickets. The first amendment is to do quarterly or as needed.
Okay. All right. We have a motion by Ms. Otto and support by Ms. Bellinger for quarterly reports from the township attorney or as needed.
Correct.
Okay, that's what we're voting on.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. The second amendment to the main motion was that we would exclude, made by Ms. Zelnuck, and who seconded that?
Bellinger.
Ms. Bellinger.
Okay. That we would exclude traffic tickets. Any more discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Now, the other motion, the original motion, which you have heard, do I need to read it again?
Hopefully not, you don't have it.
I don't have it, so I can't do that, okay?
Give it to.
We all know what it is. And when do you want the first quarterly report to start? We'll start November 1st. Okay. All right, so this motion was moved by Mr. Dockett and supported by Ms. Bellinger to direct the township attorneys, which include Mr. Burns and any of their attorney employed by the township, to provide in writing to every board member a monthly synopsis of cases they are working on that includes a brief description of the case and progress of each. This information is to be delivered by the first of each quarter. Oops, description of the case and progress of each. Can I add minus traffic tickets? Minus traffic tickets. This information is to be delivered by the first of each quarter to the township manager, to be delivered to each board member no later than forty-eight hours after receipt of such information. Effective date for the first submission of documents will be November 1st, 2017. So, we have a motion.
Support.
Well, it was already done.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all in favor, or no, should we do a roll call? Roll call vote, please.
Otto.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Dockett.
Yes.
Zelnuck.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Chocley.
Yes.
Manley. Yes.
Thank you. All right, well, that will add more reading material to our list. Here, let's pass this down, but it's good information, so.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Now, correspondence and announcements. Does anyone have anything? Ms. Bellinger.
I got a couple of correspondence regarding this whole thing with the cars. One gentleman was referring to, he was concerned that it was infringing on property rights, and says, "I am writing over my concern about this. In a rural setting, it should be no matter where what someone owns, especially if it's out of sight." And that was his aspect. Another correspondence I got was from a gentleman from Ohio with a suggestion that perhaps the township helped him organize a Saturday, Sunday car auction. So, I promised that I would make mention, and there I had done so. And I think that's all that I have at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, seeing nothing. We will move on to our presentation. We have the Land Preservation Committee here tonight to talk about their work, and we look forward to this. We'll come on up. This is David Perry. He's on the committee, and then Sue Schink. You can introduce anybody else who's on here.
Andy Lacatos.
Yep, well-
Yes, is this microphone on?
Yep, we'll let you introduce, and then-
Yes, we have Sue Schink here, as you mentioned, and Julia Henshaw, and Andy Lacatos. Is that right? Okay. We are four of the seven members of the committee, and Lenore, excuse me, I'm looking back here. Lenore is another member of our committee. She's our board representative, I should say. So, thank you all for coming this evening. My first concern here is that you be able to see this. Can people see this? Is there anybody who can't? Now, I've got to do this little trick where I advance the slide and then get out of your way, so I'm going to do my best at that and try not to pull this cord off. Okay, so, moving right along here. Okay, what is land preservation? It's a way to protect both natural areas and farmland from other uses. And lands can be permanently, and the key word here is permanently, preserved in their current natural or agricultural state. Now, what does that mean? I'm going to make an odd analogy here. At the corner of Earhart Road and North Territorial, there's a cemetery, and there's some graves in that cemetery that are almost 200 years old. Think about that. Nobody's touched that land for almost that long. It's maybe 100, we've got some historians here, maybe 160, 180 years, but they're old. And nobody dares do anything to that land, right? So, that's what we're talking about here. We're talking about setting aside land as natural areas, forests, wetlands, meadows, or farmland for eternity. That's what we're talking about. Hang on. Oh, come on. Let's try this. I'm not used to doing it like this. Hang on. Okay, good. Now, why preserve the land? Because we have over 20 years of Northfield Township resident surveys that say preserving the rural character of this township is a very high priority. Okay, this is a special place. I wish I had saved the article from the Detroit News I saw several years ago that rated this number 11 as the place to live in metro Detroit, Northfield Township. Okay, and I think in large part, that's due to our rural character. Natural areas are part of the green infrastructure, providing services such as groundwater regeneration and wildlife protection. So, when we set aside an area as a recreational area, for example, that's a place you can go hike and, you know, birdwatch or take pictures or whatever it is you like to do, but sometimes you'll drive by these places and not see anything there. No one's there, no one's using that place, quote unquote. Meanwhile, there are people all over the township turning on their faucets and getting water because that's protecting the watershed, okay? We're getting wildlife that's being protected. We have wildlife corridors where wildlife can move back and forth from different areas and preserve species in our area. So, the green infrastructure is fresh air, fresh water, these types of things we take for granted. And then, we have agricultural land that produces food for local, national, and international consumption and income. We're talking about a township here, right? Home. But if you look at this at a national scale and a world scale, we have prime farmland. To have land that has deep, tillable fertile soil, that's flat, doesn't erode easily, and we have rain that waters our crops, it's a miracle, okay? There's so many places in the world that don't have that, and this is prime farmland. So, how can land be preserved? Well, there's some different ways. One is donation of land and development rights, okay? So, we'll talk a little bit more about development rights in a minute, but a land donation is pretty clear, somebody gives their land away. If they do that, there's an immediate benefit and a tax deduction, all right? Now, this obviously depends on somebody's generosity, all right? So, maybe I'm feeling very generous today, generous today, I have 40 acres and I want to cede 20 of that to the township. I could do that. Or maybe I want to keep my land to live on it, work on it, but I can put that in my will, okay, that I'd like to donate out upon my passing. So, that's one way, through straightforward donations. Another way is purchase of land. Townships would provide part of total land cost. Matching funds are usually provided by various resources. These can be federal, the federal government can provide resources for preserving land. The state can do that, the county can do that, and even cities can do that. An example, a great example here is the Ann Arbor Green Belt. All right? So, we're talking about matching funds. There's a slide coming up here that talks a little bit more about that, but I'm going to say it here right now so you keep this in mind. We're talking about matching funds. We're talking about $2 to $5 given to the township for every dollar the township invests. This is what we're seeing in communities around us, okay? So, pretty good return on investment. I wish I could do that well with my investments. Next, we have purchase of development rights. This one's a little confusing, but it's not, so we're going to deconstruct it a little bit so you understand what that is. Okay, so, first of all, we have matching funds typically with this, where two or three partners are paying a landowner. They're paying a landowner for the promise to keep this as is, all right? So, the landowner continues to own and to use the property, okay? However, they can't build a, you know, a racing course on there, they can't put a party store up there. They have to farm the land and/or keep the land in a natural state. Now, this does not mean they must actively farm, okay? Leaving it alone is fine, too, all right? But the idea is to farm it, not develop it, or leave it in its natural state. They can sell that land, even though they've sold development rights, okay, they're saying, "I'm not going to put a subdivision here or racetrack or whatever," they can sell that at agricultural value. Now, also, the land will stay on the tax rolls, and that's an extremely important point here, okay? We're not talking about giving up taxable income for the township when this is done. Still taxable property. Okay? Well, good on that. How are lands selected for preservation? Larger parcels are preferred, 20 or more acres, all right? That doesn't mean they're not going to look at things that are less than 20 acres, but 20 acres or more preserved. Reason is, okay, larger, you can create what are called biological islands by trying to preserve, you know, a little five-acre tract here and a little five-acre tract there. You're not going to have the wildlife moving around and having the space it needs. So, larger things are good for that. Also, for farming purposes, a larger piece of land is more conducive to farming. I do want to add, though, we need to leave the mindset of farm has to be 40, 80 acres, we grow grain on that thing. Example, if you had an acre of land, you could have a very successful farm if you do it correctly, okay? Somebody growing mushrooms, for example, you can see these different kinds of mushrooms in the groceries now, some are like $10, $15 a pound. You want to grow those in an acre of land? There's lots of things you can do, and that's just one example of many. Okay, so, lands adjacent to existing preserved lands, again, a big area of farmland or a big area of natural area that will allow for the flow back and forth of wildlife. Desirable natural features like forest- Desirable natural features, like forests, wetlands, and views. So these are desirable from the standpoint of green infrastructure, but they're also desirable from the standpoint of it's a nice place to see. We drive around the roads of this county, excuse me, of this county and this township, and we see wonderful views, and that's part of what we're trying to preserve here. Good agricultural soils, that speaks for itself, for farmland, right? Doesn't need to be good agricultural soil if you're saving a natural area, but in farmland, of course. And importantly, and this is a very, very important point, landowners must agree to participate in this program. It is 100% voluntary, okay? Obviously, people will be contacting people who have land, trying to tell them about the program and get them interested, but it is a volunteer thing. No one's going to get expropriated with a land preservation program. Now, Washtenaw County has created some tools to help in this decision-making. This was created by, I believe, Parks and Recreation. And what they've done here, they've assessed different areas of land for their value, the relative value, for preservation, and they're ranked, okay, on some of these factors we've just talked about. You want to add to that at all, Sue?
Well, I think you- The county has given us copies of the maps, and so soon they'll be laminated and easy to view. It's a lot of fun, there's, I mean, it's a lot of fun to look at. They, they've worked with the Huron River Watershed Council and also with Legacy Land Conservancy to assess different factors that include, on the natural areas, the ability to support wildlife, groundwater recharge, and things like that, and also, like, rare species. And then, on the agricultural land, there are a whole host of factors that go in that are actually corresponding to the county's assessment for actually determining which parcels the county is willing to put money forward on. I helped design that, that list of factors and that point system, and I, I know we've bandied it about before, and I can get copies to everybody who wants them. Those things are access to roads, the quality of the soil, the size of the parcel, adjacent woodlands, and proximity to other parcels that are already preserved. So, on this map also, there are parks and preserves that already exist, so there's the preserve up by Whitmore Lake. And you can see, my, my farm down here, we donated an easement, so if anybody has particular questions, we've, we've lived that process. So, I think if you have other questions, I'm happy to talk more about it, but also, we're going to have these maps up and easy to view very soon.
Okay, where is land being preserved? Currently, there are local land preservation programs in Washtenaw County. There's a county-wide program. The city of Ann Arbor Green Belt, we've all heard about, right? Webster Township, Pittsfield Township, Scioto Township, Salem Township, and Ann Arbor Township. Now, if you're playing tic-tac-toe here with the map, we have Salem to the east, Northfield Township, Webster to the west, Ann Arbor Township to the south, to the south, to the south of Ann Arbor Township is Pittfield Township. We've got 25% of the townships in the county right now with land preservation programs, all right? And I'm sure we're not the only one talking about it right now, but we're not alone in looking at this thing. Okay, Ann Arbor Township, there's an example of a preserved farmland there. And how is this funded? Okay, we had voters in the neighboring communities have passed millages to fund land preservation. Matching funds are typically used, as I mentioned earlier, to purchase land outright or purchase development rights, which is better use of dollars. Townships must provide some funding to acquire matching funds. Consider the seed money, all right? I don't know if you ever made crystals when you were a kid? You got to throw a little crystal in your solution, and that's the seed that everything builds up around. That's what the money's like for the township. It puts some money into the pot, but then other funders will add to that pot and make it grow much more than it was originally. Matching funds typically provide $2 to $5 for each dollar that a township invests. Again, not free here, but a darn good investment, okay? Good return. How do communities start? Well, we have to start by educating the community. We're doing that right now, right here. We need to obviously reach a lot more people, but we have to talk about what land preservation is, why it's important, and how it can be done. Next, we have to educate landowners. Not everybody's going to want to do this, and that's fine, it's voluntary, but we do have to make them aware that programs are available and how they can participate, and why they might like to. We need to identify funding resources. We need to identify potential farmland and natural areas to preserve, and we have to work with landowners who are interested in participating. And that process can sometimes take years, all right? Some people are ready to jump into this right away, others are saying, "Well, you know, I think I'm interested in that, but I'm just not at the right point in my life right now to want to do that." And over time, they can. So, an example of a natural area that's preserved, this is the Whitmore Lake Preserve, which is our newest preserve in the township. This is land that was purchased directly with funds by Washtenaw County Parks. Correct me if I'm wrong here, you were all here at that meeting, I think. So, this is a very valuable resource. It's a good example because, A, it's good for recreation, and B, it really does help our green infrastructure. You've got wetlands in there, you've got upland areas, there are meadow areas in there as well. Now, you might say, "Well, wetlands is kind of a no-brainer. We're not using them for anything, let's just protect them," all right? There's a reason for that, but you also need to have upland areas, because there are species that live in lowland areas that don't live in upland areas, on the dry areas, and vice versa. Even species that live in lowland areas, like turtles, need to have upland areas that are dry where they can go lay their eggs. So you have to plan this out, so you've got a little bit of everything, all right? And that's how we preserve. This is a great example of that. And finally, agricultural lands. This is stuff taken in, here in the township. We have obviously lots of agricultural lands here, but again, I'm going to point out that, going back to that cemetery analogy, going back almost 200 years, what's it going to be like 200 years from now? For food, here. All right, right now, you go to Kroger's, you buy all your fresh vegetables, and you go home and you eat them, your fruits and vegetables, right? Where do those come from? I don't know. Well, some say Mexico on the label, okay, well, that's fine. A lot of them come from California, the Central Valley in California. That's where kind of the cornucopia is, if you will, of our fruit and vegetable crops. But right now, they're extracting groundwater there at such a rate that the entire valley they can detect from outer space that it's actually sinking, okay? That's how fast they're removing groundwater from there in an unsustainable fashion. I predict that in 100 years, we will definitely not be getting vegetables from California. Okay, so, what we have is a local resource that can produce food locally for people and for the far and through the future. So, that's the prepared part of our conversation here, and we welcome comments and questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Otto.
Okay, I'm going to go through. On one of your slides, you talked about where the land is being preserved, and you talked about the different townships. How many land preservations are in Northfield Township today?
How much preserved land is in Northfield Township? I don't know specifically. I think we can go back to the county and ask them to make that calculation for us. Can you go back to the map? The Rokels have participated in the county program. That was a situation where I think their farm is 160 acres, and there were also federal funds that came in and helped make that happen. And this map doesn't have, it doesn't have the parcels on there. I believe from the county, we can get one that has that layer as well. They have lots and lots of maps, but I, you know, this is a short presentation, so we could try to figure out how to get that information to you in a usable manner. There are people like me who have donated an easement. The Alexanders on the corner of Hellner and Northfield Church, they sold an easement. So there, and then, there's over here, I believe this might, the county might own that outright. There's a preserve over here. So, there are, there's a spattering of preserved parcels in Northfield Township.
We could also add to that, if the Ann Arbor Green Belt kind of draws a line at Five Mile Road in the south, so Five Mile Road in the south is eligible to participate and get funding for that.
I can't hear you if you're trying to talk to me.
Excuse me, okay. Is that better?
And nobody on TV can hear you either.
Okay, I apologize to those of you out in TV land, and to you, Mr. Otto. I will repeat what I said. Here in Northfield Township, we have about half the township from Five Mile South to the border with Ann Arbor Township that is part of the Green Belt, Ann Arbor Green Belt. And there are some parcels there that are, have been funded by that. Your question's a good one, Jackie. Short answer is, we don't know, but we'll find out.
One of the reasons why, you know, even when you have a number of parcels preserved, that you'd still want to work toward having more, is that it's important to preserve blocks of land, not just for wildlife, but also for the farmers, so that the businesses that support the farmers can continue to exist and support them. If somebody has to drive an hour to get a part for a machine, it makes it really hard to have that machine, you know, if it breaks down. So that's one of the goals of the preservation program and at the county level, and I'm the chair of that, so when I talk about that, that's because that's, I have a lot of experience with that. To develop blocks so that people can rely on each other, and there's a synergy there that won't be there if there's just little pockets, I mean, really little pockets surrounded by development.
Okay, Ms. Check.
I don't have, well, I do have a question, but my first comment was, we've seen that map, the one that actually had the land areas on it, and I was surprised there wasn't many as there was, but yeah, it is available. I do have a question under, how do communities start? Educate the community. I understand Land Preservation Committee is in its infancy right now, but do you have any thoughts on how you're going to plan to reach out to the residents, to educate them, and solicit information from them as well?
We've talked about creating a document, well, we're going to put some information on the township website. We are going to create a document that's easy to hand out, and we are going to invite people to come and learn more about it. We'll be inviting people who have participated in preserving their land to come and talk, as well as people who have been participating in running programs, so that we can get a variety of different perspectives on that. When I was trustee a long time ago, I sponsored a program, planned it out, and seven couples came, and every one of those couples took some concrete step toward, or I should say, you know, groups of people who were owning land, made some concrete step toward preserving their land from that. So, some of the people didn't actually ever preserve their land. Some people did, the Rokels were there, and they ended up participating in the county program and fully preserving their farm. So, like David said, it takes a long time, and it's going to take more than one outreach, but that, that's the first, those are the first steps.
Okay, thank you.
Also, Janet, I still owe stuff to the website, the township website. I've not forgotten that. So part of that is the website. You've heard me say that before, I know, but I'm going to do it.
Okay, Ms. Bellinger has a question.
Yes.
Yeah, I think Jackie, Jackie had asked the first one I had, which was how much, how many acres are already conserved or preserved here in Northfield. Another one is, how are taxes collected for these programs? How are they already collected?
Well, I think it depends on the entity, first of all. There's federal, there's state, there's city, and there's township. I could speak to the township and the Ann Arbor Green Belt, and those were all done with millages.
No, how are the taxes collected already for programs we already have? For what we currently have in our township of Northfield?
Externally. Okay, for example, those that are funded by the Ann Arbor Green Belt would be one of the funding sources. They're probably getting funding from other places as well, and I'm going to let Sue talk to that, but not by Northfield Township currently.
If we may, I'm not sure, I don't think I understand your question, Ms. Bellinger.
Well, how are the taxes collected for these programs already? We have the county, we have the state, the federal, is this-
So, are you saying, like, if a land is preserved, how would we collect the taxes?
No, how, where already do they collect the money for that? From what sources?
Are you talking about the matching funds?
No, I'm talking about what taxes already do we, are we being-
Here in the township?
She wants, I think she wants to know where the, who is being taxed for which-
Yeah, for the funding, I guess.
Yeah, we don't, we don't hear of the township, but there's federal funding that comes in. The Ann Arbor has taxed themselves for this program.
Washtenaw County must have a tax.
Washtenaw County has-
So we have one. So we are taxed.
Well, yes, and we are all paying into Washtenaw County.
We pay into a county tax, yes, as part of that.
Right, so, yes, Washtenaw County has one because the natural preserve that was done was through Washtenaw County on Naller and Seven Mile.
Okay, so basically, we currently pay from the federal for a tax. Federal taxes contribute to some degree, state taxes and our county taxes. There's some provisions in there that go towards this. The other thing is, who provide, who will provide the education for the landowners?
Well, I didn't say that, in the, in most of the other townships, they have hired a consultant who, I mean, he's the same person in each township, Barry Lonick, he, he's been involved in this for, you know, I think 40 years.
How much does he charge?
I don't know exactly how much he charges per hour. He has told me that, and I don't, I would want to look that up, but he, he also sometimes will charge a bulk rate for, for a project. So he'll say, "I'll charge so much to do this work, that work, and that work." And I, we have talked to him about his services and what he could provide to the township. And if, we understood that the board wasn't ready to go forward with hiring a consultant at this point, and that the board would like us to do more research and more work on our own. If it comes to that point, Barry will be submitting a complete proposal, which we would then submit to the board, and we'd also open that up for a, an open bid. There are other people who can do that work.
So he's fairly, fairly influential on the Land Preservation Committee?
In the committee?
Yeah. Like, how much influence does he have on the committee?
He doesn't have any influence. I would say he's well-respected in the community.
No, but for the Land Preservation Committee? Sounds like he'll be, he'll be an effective tool?
He would be an effective tool. I think, I would say that he gives good advice, and he's been very active in getting land preservation to, in Washtenaw County, he's been an integral part of the programming that's been going on in Washtenaw County. He used to be at the Legacy Land Conservancy when it was called the Potawatomi Land Trust, and this was back when I was in college. And so he's done a lot of work, and so he's very well-respected. The program, and when I say the program, I mean, there's, there are a lot of programs in Washtenaw County. Everybody has been very cooperative in working together, the townships with the county, with the Green Belt, with the federal government. It's, if it's not the most respected land preservation situation in the country, it's darn close. There's a thing called the- There's a thing called the rally each fall that all the land, all the, the land conservancies in the nation are invited to and can go to and, you know, citizens can go to. And people from Washtenaw County are routinely asked to talk about what's going on here because it's just so successful. And so Barry is a big part of that and so he's very well-respected.
Thank you.
Todd, I'd like to address your question regarding where the tax dollars come from, because I think I've got a better understanding now. Everybody in this room is paying tax dollars to federal tax dollars, state tax dollars, and county tax dollars, okay? And these entities.
And township.
And township, of course, yeah, of course, that's a given. I almost forgot, but I don't forget. Lenora would be upset with me if I did. Anyway, so we have these three entities I'm talking about here that are, we're paying tax monies into, all right? And they contribute to these efforts. Now, there are magnets out there for those dollars. There's a magnet in Webster Township, there's a magnet in Salem Township, there's a magnet over there in Syo Township, and there's one in Pittsfield Township, and there's one in Ann Arbor Township. We have no magnet. We want one.
Okay, thank you. So.
Mr. Dock, oh.
I have another question. Right, but we should complete the board's questions first. And, you know.
Mr. Dock, you had a question.
No, I have some statements. I'll preserving land, that's okay with me. Giving land away, that's okay with me. Township must provide funding, that is not okay with me. A township should not fund this project or any other project, in my opinion. You people want this project, get together and pay for it. Do it yourself. I own a business in Northfield Township. Would you like to provide funding to help the business people in Northfield Township? I don't think so. Farmers get a lot of help already from the government. So, we have a problem with our budget right now and we are way underfunded. And this board gives away money like water. So, I would be not voting for any of this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dock, if I could respond to that.
No, no, no. This isn't necessarily back and forth. We have a member of the public we'd like to.
Okay, that's fine.
To speak.
Thank you.
Or ask a question, I mean.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So.
What's your name, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry, Marie King.
Marie King?
Yeah.
Okay, and your address?
Eighty-five sixty-three Dixboro Road.
Okay.
When you were saying the easement that you donated, was that like a 20 acre parcel or is an easement smaller than your 20 acre minimal?
The donation was on about 20 acres, but when it's a private donation, it's, there's a different level of scrutiny. It's, it's kind of a gift.
Okay, you can be a.
Yeah, and if you'd like to talk with me more about that later, I'd be glad to.
I was just curious if there, if there was a difference in the minimal amount that you could donate, so you clarified that. Thank you. And the other one is, when you're talking about this program and it would say that, you know, then when you donate your property or they purchase property and it would, the development rights on that, I guess I want some clarification if I could. The development rights meaning like, okay, there will not be any developments, period? Or you all have the right to develop whatever the heck you want on that donation? Do you understand what I'm saying? Which would compromise the donation in the first place?
Okay, I think I understand everything except maybe the last sentence there, but let me, let me try here. When development rights are purchased, what someone is doing is they're basically saying, okay, you can give me some money in return for the promise that this land will stay in agricultural or natural use, okay? It won't be developed, it won't be paved, we're not cutting trees down, we're not going to put a oil well in here, we're not going to put a coal mine in here, et cetera, et cetera, okay? So, essentially, it's a promise, and I'm going back to my cemetery analogy, you're not going to plow a grave, that's for the dead, unfortunately, okay? These farmlands are for the living, okay? Really, it's basis of life and we're trying to preserve our farmlands. So, am I answering your question?
Okay. Another addendum on that.
Is there a limit here?
No, no, just another addendum on that. Just as a clarification, okay, so you say that it won't be developed for like whatever, you know, an oil well or, yeah, eternity. Okay, what about, like, years ago, we fought against cell towers being put out there because it was going to affect all the neighbors. And I led that fight on that and we won. My question to you is if that land is donated or purchased and the development rights are hopefully to not develop on this property, does that exclude like cellphone, cellphone towers and their big air conditioners that would greatly, greatly hinder wildlife and people existence and their enjoyment?
So, if, if somebody's donating their development rights or selling their development rights, that is accomplished through a contract. And so you have the seller, the landowner, and you have the entity that's providing the funds or accepting the donation. And the contract has the terms of what's allowed and what's not allowed and those are negotiated on a property by property basis. And so, in terms, in the, in terms of a cell tower, I can't say right off the bat, I don't know, but the federal government has its, its bottom line, the county has its bottom line, the townships have their rules too, so it would depend on the partners involved.
So theoretically, it could be.
So theoretically, just for conversation purposes, that could be a possibility, that could exist on that property. Okay.
Thank you. And a contract is, it's a legally binding document that goes on forever. So, with, with one of these purchase of development rights, it's not just a promise, you know, which promises, you know how promises are, but it's a legally binding document. I need to let somebody else here. And we've got to get moving on here too, so.
We've been doing this for 45 months now.
Yeah, we need to get, get moving on.
Sure, last thesis.
And we've got quite a bit to go with it.
So, let's have an interested person in.
Please stand and state your name and address, please.
Sure, my name is Shannon Koenig and I live at ninety-five forty Main Street. So, let's say I'm very interested in, in land preservation and I have $400,000 that I want to contribute to something. For seed money, for, for attracting matching grants, is that seed money only permitted to come through a millage or can it come from a personal donation? So, that's one question. The other question that I had was for the, on Seven Mile, the Washtenaw Park there, did that, did that seed money, did it, I mean, was that funded by a millage or?
No.
I don't, you guys might not know how that, how that came about. And my third question is, when you said these other various townships have a magnet for tax dollars, can you explain what you mean?
I'll try to address those questions and Sue, jump in at any time. Sue, see, one of these days about your more information thing, I can write communication stuff pretty well. Sue is a genius on this stuff, so we're going to try to do a brain dump, so. I defer to her a lot. But anyway, $400,000 contributions, the contributions can come from anywhere. So, if somebody has money to contribute to that, there are ways to make that happen, of course.
You have a part of the pot, but then.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. It would be seed money, if you will. Your next question is about the park, Whitmore Lake Park at Seven Mile, that was purchased with county funds, Parks and Recreation exclusively. So, there weren't any matching funds involved, to my knowledge on that, correct? And that, that was a great slam dunk for this community because we got this great park, didn't pay a cent for it, so. And your third question was regarding?
Magnet.
The magnet, okay, the magnet I'm referring to is, they have land preservation programs. They have seed money. That seed money's a magnet, okay, for all these other dollars floating around out there, okay? Because, you know, theoretically, we could get those funds too. But, the first thing they're going to ask you is, well, what are you guys putting up for this? Nothing? Oh, okay. These folks have $10,000 that they want to do.
We're going to need to wrap up, so like, just final comments here, I guess.
Okay, I'll just clarify the one thing. The county can make a decision to participate in, in preserving land in Northfield Township without Northfield Township having seed money. But it happens less than in the townships where they have money. And part of that is because of the strong ethic of cooperation and it's the same thing with the Ann Arbor Green Belt. And I've seen that firsthand and I think we could probably get some figures about that, but that's going to require asking the county to go back and make some calculations.
Okay, thank you. Last question, Ms. Bellinger.
We need to clarify that, you know, the park on Naller, Seven Mile Naller, it did cost us money. It cost us quite a few years of tax money. So, to say it didn't cost anything and if we don't have a magnet because we don't have money in a pot, special pot, strictly just for area of preservation, is actually bogus. We pay, we pay more than a cent, a red cent. We pay through taxes. So, we have paid for many, many years for now the county to say, oh, well, maybe we'll give you back some of that money at this location. So, I just want to make sure people understand, it does cost. Taxes are real money out of our pockets. Thank you.
Touche, you're absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you. We should move on to the next item in the agenda then. Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you, everyone.
It was very helpful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Did you want to handle this?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, the next, the next item will be handled by Ms. Zelnak, who was on the Land Preservation Committee.
The Land Preservation Committee wrote some bylaws and we'd like to have the board approve these bylaws with, how do I say that, Mr. Mainz? Upon approval review?
Upon review by the city, review and approval by the township attorney.
Okay, so, make a motion to approve the bylaws with approval by the township attorney.
Pending, okay, so we have motion to approve the bylaws of the Land Preservation Committee pending approval by the township attorney.
Yep.
Okay, that was a motion by Ms. Zelnak. I will support that. Okay. Do we have any more discussion on this item here? Ms. Bellinger.
The Farmland and Natural Areas Preservation Committee was put in place as an advisory committee. They have no powers or duties and they know, have no need for bylaws. This committee was casually created December 2016 as a Farmland and Natural Areas Preservation Committee to look into and research strategies that would benefit the township. So, you know, by definition, a committee or commission is created to generate a report or accomplish a goal and then be dissolved. So, I'd like to pass something out here to the board and I want to continue reading something, please.
There you go. You can have mine, I'll share with Marley.
Let me continue then. I voiced my concerns regarding that I suspected being eventual request to use tax money for their ambitions. At the June 27th meeting, they did exactly that. Please note that the report presented by the Farmland and Natural Areas Preservation Committee that was included in our packet for the June 27th meeting actually changed the goal of the committee and proposed a new commission with self-proposed goal of implementing specific aspects of the master plan. It must be mentioned that the township board, planning commission, and other bodies already implement the master plan. At this meeting, the Farmland and Natural Areas Preservation Committee intended to petition the board for $10,000 of general fund money. I made a motion to dissolve this overreaching committee. Unfortunately, the motion failed. Like I say, by definition, a committee or a commission is created to generate a report to assist us, to give us information, to accomplish a goal and then be dissolved. These proposed bylaws that we have here tonight for this Farmland and Preservation, Natural Areas Preservation Committee are far beyond what this advisory committee was originally created for. It would appear that the Farmland and Natural Areas Committee is trying to self-assign itself with powers and duties that are already assigned to existing bodies. The September issue of Township Focus Magazine that we get here as trustees addresses some of these issues regarding what a committee can be used for. The article warns, quote, "Before a committee is established, the township board should consult state laws and the township's attorney to ensure that the proposed committee does not assume powers or duties assigned to statutorily established or authorized boards or commissions." That's on page 10. For example, the planning commission's central mission is to develop a comprehensive master plan for the township. This plan deals with where and land, land uses may be developed or preserved. This is page 51 out of the book called Managing the Modern Michigan Township. Now, the zoning's central purpose is to regulate how people use land in the township. Zoning thus is an enforcement tool, a process that permits individuals to use land in specific ways and prohibit other actions. That's page 52 of the same, Managing the Modern Michigan Township. The proposed bylaws by the Farmland and Natural Areas Preservation Committee directly challenges the duties of the planning and zoning commissions by assuming or usurping these roles. Let those passionate for this cause be encouraged to form some form of a group or legal body or club, think of Ducks Unlimited, Pheasants Forever, to organize, educate, and aid interested property owners to obtain conservation easements in land preservation contracts. Let their dreams be funded voluntarily by others that share in their passion, not forcefully through the blunt instrument of taxations. You know, we, we moved here to this township because we really do like the spaces and the areas. That's why a lot of people are here. We have a strong master plan, we have elected officials who endeavor to protect, we have a planning commission that endeavors to protect and preserve. This is simply just an overreach. And something here to ponder, why give money to a property owner to prevent development when it has already been established through zoning that the property can't be developed? The money is then a gift.
Is that all, Ms. Bellinger?
That's all I have at the moment unless I need to reiterate something. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any more comments on the bylaws?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Chick.
Just under disclosures, I wonder if, it says, "Any LPC member with an ownership or other financial interest in a parcel under consideration," the last sentence, "Any member who owns property adjacent to a property under consideration shall disclose the fact and abstain from discussion avoiding on such application." I'm wondering if there shouldn't also be something in there regarding like a financial relationship between someone else that is wanting to enter into the program? It does cause a conflict?
Okay. Page three. Page three. We, we will have the opportunity for Mr. Mainz to take a look at this over the next couple of weeks, correct, Mr. Mainz?
So, we could probably get you some wording to what Ms. Chick has added about the financial interest in addition to it on the disclosure on page four.
Okay, Ms. Otto.
I have a couple of things.
I have a couple of things. One, compensation, I did not see anywhere in here that compensation has been addressed. It is my understanding that this will be and will continue to be a non-compensated board, which means it's a voluntary committee. With that, I have an, I don't, it says on the second page that the Land Preservation Committee shall annually elect a chair, vice-chair, secretary, and treasurer. I would not agree with having the treasurer, no other board that the township has, has a treasurer on it. Does the, does-
The DDA does.
Planning Commission doesn't?
No.
ZBA doesn't?
Park and Recs.
Park and Recs doesn't?
Okay. We can eliminate that.
So there is one, two, three paragraph for, under the duties of officers, so that I would not approve to have that statement in there that the treasurer manages the financial records. Actually, it's the board, the township board, that manages the financial records of all the commissions and committees.
Yep, we'll remove that, that's fine. Okay. And we'll remove-
I just would take that out because there's no treasurer on that board. On page three, it says, "The township attorney shall be the LPC's legal advisor as authorized by the township manager." I would strike out the township manager and put the township board. We actually are the ones that would approve having the attorney involved in any matter or advise, I think.
I don't know what I think of that. Do we, I don't know if we have that language in like our Parks and Rec, for instance.
I don't think we do.
You know, basically-
Do we have a Park and Recs? Do we have a Park and Recs bylaws? We couldn't find it.
We don't have Parks and Rec bylaws yet, by the way. Those will be kind of-
Anyway, so we were trying to look at those. That's fine, but we can-
The ZBA goes, I mean, we can't, as the ZBA, go to Paul and say, Paul or Brad and say, "We need your opinion on this." It has to go towards the township board first, doesn't it?
We do take direction from the township board directly.
Yep.
Yep, that's fine.
The next one that I have is powers and duty. I will not approve this if the word "powers" are in there. I would approve it with duties, but not powers. Because the ZBA has a power over the ordinances. The planning commission has power to make ordinances. This committee doesn't have powers.
I'm fine with that. I don't know if anybody-
The other one that I seen, and this is the one that I would have our attorney question, is the third one down in that, under duties, is to review applications for purchase of land, development rights in accordance with articles, article I recommend to the township board and the properties in which it expends funds. I'm gonna leave that for them to decide whether that can be in there or not.
Sure.
Yep, I had just some thoughts on that one and the one below it as well. If we are at a point in time where-
I think you can advise us. I don't know if-
They're not adversary. They're recommending board, just like the planning commission.
Yeah, I don't even know if they can, if they have the right to review any applications or anything.
Right, correct. And that one, again, we would look for the attorney to see if that would be applicable to me, both of those at this point in time.
I think there's enough items here that may need correction that we should-
I can withdraw the motion and make the corrections and bring it back.
Bring it back with a clean-
I'll do that.
And have the attorney take a look at it in the meantime.
Do we want the attorney to, you know, we'll make the correction and have the attorney look at it before it's brought back? Is that how, or do we want it and then send it to the attorney? Which way?
I think it's better to have the attorney take a look at it.
Okay, we'll do that. I withdraw my motion.
And I'll approve that withdrawal.
And we will make the changes as directed by the board, and we'll have the attorney review it first before we bring it back.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Locatis, come up to the microphone if you have a question. I'm entertaining this because Mr. Locatis is on the Land Preservation Committee.
The question that, or what we would like-
Is it, are you addressing the bylaws?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm addressing the bylaws, and I hope I'm not going to speak out of turn here, but we spent a lot of time on that. We did do a lot of that, came from normal wording, okay? So when you are done doing your homework on this, bring it back to us before you vote so that we have a, so that we may still need to ask other questions ourselves. Is that possible?
So the plan would be that we'll make the changes as suggested by the board, then the Land Preservation Committee would review it as well, and then, once the land preservation is in agreement with it, we would bring it back to the board as well as the attorney.
Does that work?
Yep. So we'll make the changes as requested, take that to the Land Preservation Committee. We'll make the changes and agree to them, and then, at that point, I think I'll have the attorney look at it.
And that, of course, is based on the fact of whether or not we are going to have a standing committee.
I think right now we are.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment that if it goes to the Land Preservation Committee and they want to make additional changes, it has to go back to the attorney before it comes back to us.
Sure. Absolutely, absolutely.
Yep, thank you.
So I think it'd be helpful if any of us who had comments would email it to-
Yeah, you can email it, that would be better.
Email it to the committee. Thank you. And I have to say, I do appreciate the volunteer, you know, this is a volunteer committee. They don't get any, they come and they work on this, and they work hard on this, and it's a volunteer committee, they don't get any compensation. So I would just like to say thank you, because it is a lot of work, putting this all together and coming out here. All of our committees are like that. Parks and Rec, nobody gets paid anything.
Not on the Parks and Rec.
No.
The Planning Commission and ZBA are the only two.
Planning and ZBA do get paid, but-
Because they're required?
Yes.
And does DDA?
No, DDA is totally volunteer also.
Okay.
So we have a lot of people putting in a lot of time because they care about this township, and I do thank you very much for all of that.
Yeah, we did boost guys for four years voluntarily.
Yeah.
Four years.
Six, almost six years.
Yep. Okay, so this will be tabled to a future week.
I have not had a word here.
Go ahead, Mr. Dockett, quickly.
This is an advisory committee. Why do they need by, I mean, I'd like to know what our lawyer thinks about their advisory committee. Why do they need bylaws? It doesn't make sense.
All right.
I would like to have that answered.
We're gonna take a look at the entire-
Will you make a note of this?
Absolutely.
Yep. Because I would like to have an answer to that.
We're gonna look at the bylaws from top to bottom. We're gonna look at whether there needs to be an ordinance. We'll look at the whole thing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I got one more comment on this. To me, it's, as I tried to reiterate here, it's a clearly energized group that really wishes to overstep the boundaries of an advisory committee. That is the bottom line.
And spend their money.
That's what I'm saying. They want to overstep the boundaries, and they've done it months ago, and here they are again with the same thing. Thank you.
I would like to make a comment on behalf of the Land Preservation Committee. It was approved by the board. The board wanted bylaws, we did them. So if there are, you know, we need to know upfront if there's anything, as, you know, the lawyer, because we have spent a lot of time doing the bylaws, to make sure that it's understood what the committee expects to present to the board and do for the township. So if there is a change in directions, we certainly would need to know that before we, you know, continue, because a lot of time has already been spent in with the documents that you've already been presented. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Chick.
I just want to make a correction, but if you had something related to the bylaws, not a correction to the bylaws, something else.
Well, no, it's associated. I said, I would like to reaffirm my support for the Land Preservation Committee in that this board has requested bylaws and an action plan. And if I have to make a motion, so we can reaffirm that.
No.
Okay.
Sorry. I just wanted to clarify something for the people listening and for the board members, that zoning does not prevent development. You can have development in any zoning area in this township. All zoning does is tell you how much development you can have. It does allow a percentage of open space in some areas, but it does not prevent development anywhere in the township, basically.
Depends on the kind you want, too, but, you know, yeah, exactly.
Tells you what kind you can have and how much, basically.
Okay. Kathy Manley.
Just really quickly, you know, I again support the, you know, Land Preservation Committee, and if it's, I don't know if it's a name change because it's a committee or a commission, or what it would take to, you know, to have this function as a full-fledged committee with bylaws, you know, just like Parks and Rec. I mean, I think we definitely need to look into that and so we can give them our full support.
I look at commissions as being paid. I look at committees being volunteer. So whether they have bylaws or not, the Parks and Rec is still a committee because they're not paid.
Well, they call themselves a board. I mean, they switched their names back to board.
Well, however, to get that word advisory out of there is what I'm assuming, so.
Okay.
Okay. That's it.
We created it as an advisory committee, and that's what it is. It's an advisory committee. It's not meant to have power, and it's not meant to have duties and power and all this. It's an advisory committee to us, the board.
Okay.
Yeah, the Parks and Rec doesn't have power either.
Okay, we need to move on here. Next item, oh, it's MERS. How's that doing? We had anticipated having Tara-
Right. There was supposed to be a representative from MERS here today, but she did have a conflict, and I did send out her information to everybody, so I don't know if everybody had other questions answered.
I did send her an email, and she got back with me, but I don't know, maybe it would be good to have her here in the meeting to answer people's questions. I don't know.
I don't know if anybody else had any, and I know Stevens, you know, is versed on this and-
I don't know. Maybe Steven is under-
And if there's any questions, I might be able to answer, too.
Okay.
Pretty much an employee, what the employees want, so.
Mr. Ains is going to speak to this at this point.
This was brought up before I arrived here, but basically, MERS is one of the premier public retirement systems in the state, and so they're very well-respected. The, my understanding is that the police are already under MERS, and this would only apply to those members who are full-time employees that are not part of its membership already. So I think it affects three or four people, if I recall. And the question was whether to have them come to see the, talk to the board if you had questions, or if you didn't have questions, we were gonna have a meeting with the employees, with the representative. Whichever way you would like to do, it's fine.
Okay. Ms. Chick?
Typically, we have the representative do a presentation to the board so that everybody gets the same information, and I know that she said, you know, you can email me questions. Well, sometimes we don't have questions until we actually hear the speaker speak, so I'm not, we're ready to do this or not, so.
Ms. Manley, did you have a comment?
I just, I just feel it's more important, I mean, I guess we can have Tara come out for her to talk directly to the employees that are going to be going into the program. They should be the ones that should have more questions on the plan than-
We're board.
No, it's the township board. Okay, let me finish. You know, it's gonna be their money invested in it also, so, you know, the employees are gonna have questions on it, too, so.
Is there any timetable that, pardon me, sorry?
I mean, the employees want it to start as soon as possible because it's a better benefit for them. So we can have Tara come out if that's what you want, and have them speak to a MERS rep also if they already have it.
Ms. Otto?
I'm very familiar with all three of these plans, John Hancock, Voya, and MERS. I do think, just like we have our insurance company come out for our liability insurance, we have them come out for, our agent comes out for our health insurance, we should have them come out for this as well. I mean, it's just, it's not only a protection for the board, it's also a protection for our employees to be informed. So I feel that the employees can come out at that time as well, if they're interested.
And the residents would probably like to hear what was going on for the employees.
Should we make a motion to postpone this till we have a representative join a meeting?
I don't think we need a motion because it's not really on the agenda to vote, but just table it, and we'll get her out hopefully next meeting because this is very vital for the employees.
Right. We have to give a certain number, I mean, certain 30 days' notice or something to John Hancock, I think.
Right.
So they were hoping to join November 1st then, but it'll be sometime in, I don't know.
Hopefully, December 1st.
Hopefully, December 1st then.
And I would also like to know, because this is the retirement plan, if we do that, will it affect any of the Police Department or the Fire Department or anything like that?
Totally separate from that.
Okay, all right.
So that's tabled.
Just I may, one schedule I'd like to see in the packet for the mirrors is I'd like to see the returns. So we talk, and we spend a lot of time talking about the fees, but I'd like-
There's something in there, I think.
I'm sorry, where did you say you'd like to see?
I'd like to see the actual returns. I don't recall, so maybe I missed it.
Is that 10, is that? I don't even remember.
Well, I'm not looking for that. I'm looking for, okay, year 10, you know, what was, was it a 5% return on this fund? Was it 10% return? Was it a 15%? Was it a 2%? Was it a 3% loss? So I, I mean, I've not seen the account, you know, I'm looking for a return schedule that says, here's the returns. Maybe they're all the same for all the investments because they're all the same programs, but I'd like to just see the return rates for the different programs, because, so if you go to, let's see, the, the one with the fees, they go by the average fees by different plans? Sorry. I apologize. So since they're coming out, I'd like to see that document. So if you go to page eight, you have the average fund expense. I would like to see the average fund returns, you know, like, one, five, 10-year. And I don't know if we have something similar for John Hancock to show, like the current investments. Again, we're showing the expenses based on the funds, but I'd like to see the returns based on the funds. And again, if they're the same funds, maybe they're the same returns, but I'd like to just see that data, since, again, they're coming out. So it'd be like page eight and page nine.
Is page six something? No, that's not it.
No, I really want to see, again, the returns by funds for a, you know, current five, 10. I think that's usually how they project them out.
Okay. So we will postpone that one. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the civic event application for trunk or treat. We had a great event last year when we had our park opening, and so a lot of people were asking Barb Griffith if we were gonna do it again, and she put out the call for volunteers, and Jenny only agreed to take it, take it on, and she has recruited like eight different volunteers to help with it, and she's, the churches are gonna be involved, they're gonna, Kiwanis is gonna have hot dogs, and it's gonna be a good event. So this is planned for October 22nd, trunk or treat at the North Village Community Park area, and so here's the civic event application. And the DDA did make a motion to sponsor this on yesterday's meeting. So I will get Barb's signature on this civic event application. I didn't, I didn't have it in front of me last night, so unfortunately, I didn't get it from her last night. But Mr. Ains was with me at that meeting and can attest to the fact that the DDA intends to sponsor this event.
I'll make a motion to approve the civic event application for trunk or treat, October 22nd, 2017.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion by Bellinger and support by Otto. Did anyone have any more they would like to talk about?
Do we need an amendment to make sure-
Do we need an amendment to make sure that we're okay with regards to attorney approval?
Oh, well, this is our application.
That's our application.
Right. We all have the usual oversight by the...
Bill Wagner.
Bill Wagner will take a look at it. There's all these sign-offs on the back. They're still trying to find out if they're going to have a fire truck out there and, you know, just for the kids, so some of those kind of things will be happening, I'm sure. Ms. Bellinger?
Well, there is updates that need to be made to the last page.
I did see that, too.
That's what I was going to comment on.
I let Jennifer know yesterday and she's working on it.
Yeah.
Also, I was, Jenny told me that there was going to be vendors. They were looking at vendors during this, and they didn't know how they were going to go about getting them permits and everything.
Right. They, they thought they were going to have vendors to help pay for the event, and they were going to charge the vendors like $40 to be a vendor, while the township charges $45, I believe. So anyway, they decided not to charge anybody to be a vendor, so I think they're not having vendors at it.
I was just wondering how they were, that was the last time I talked to her.
Right. So that's, that's my understanding. Although, I thought they were talking about pizza, so I'm not, I'm not totally clear about all of that. I think they're not going to have vendors at all. And it's not listed in the application, any vendors, so there you go.
They do indicate that utilizing vendors. They say yes, and what would be the charge?
But they don't have a list, yeah. So I don't know. Can we come back with a, if they decide on vendors? Can we leave it up to them? Yeah, maybe Marcos would be there selling pizza.
I think they came and provided free food, actually.
I think they gave it away.
Yeah, they gave the food away.
They invited them to give it away.
Yeah, because Kiwanis is going to be giving away hot dogs. So Marcos was there and they gave away.
Gave it away.
They gave away pizza.
Most of the vendors that they inquired with said $40, I won't make any money, no thanks. So it's only a two-hour event.
Yeah.
It's, so, anyway, I think we'll have some giveaways, but we, we're not going to have any official vendors. So that's that, okay. So we have a motion, oh, more questions?
So is there any costs associated with this? And if there is vendors, you say probably not really going to have any vendors, so we're not going to be in any revenue either?
No, we're not going to, the township isn't going to have any revenue.
Is there anybody going to be having any revenue at all? DDA planning getting revenue or anything?
No, it's going to cost.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Right. It's all volunteers, so, but there, there is another sheet here for trunk or treat contribution, which I can talk about in a minute.
Okay, yeah, that's what I had questions on. I guess we'll go to that one next, then.
Right, so let's...
Do you have one other question?
You do?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Elnak.
So on page two. It's October 22nd, correct?
Yes.
It says the third week in October, but it's...
Oh, does it?
It's October 22nd, is that correct?
October 22nd, yes.
All right. So just on there, it just says, event schedule, third week in October. It's on page three at the bottom?
Oh, okay, but page one...
Oh, two, it's page two.
Okay, page one has it, October 22nd, so.
Okay, all right. That's all. Thanks.
Okay. So we have a motion by Ms. Bellinger and support by Ms. Otto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. We'll get the signatures on that for official. The next item was the request for a contribution for this. Now, my understanding is that the portage johns and the trash are being handled by the Parks and Rec Committee. No, I was told that by Doug Wilber. Is that not true? That you all had a meeting, the Parks and Rec Committee had a meeting, and they were talking about handling the portage johns and trash? You don't recall that being true?
We have, we barely have one.
Okay.
And there was a motion made to donate a small amount.
If this was something important, Chuck, I wish you'd talk.
Right, I'm sorry. Come on up. Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have had you to come up, yep. Because you would know if, here you are, the vice chair of the committee, Parks and Rec. Yes.
There was a meeting last Thursday night. We agreed, I believe, to give $200 of our reduced funds
Okay.
to be used towards, we did not agree to pay for a portage john because we didn't know how much it would be.
Okay.
And the same with trash removal.
Okay.
Because they didn't even know, as the proposal came to us, we didn't even know if the township was going to approve the trick or trunk.
Okay, thank you. That's all I really needed to know. Because Mr. Wilber came to the meeting and he said that the Parks and Rec had approved some funds, so that must have been the comment there. But the portage john is supposed to be $105, and the trash is supposed to be 90, and I said, hey, can't you just have some volunteers gather up the trash and put it in our trash bin here and not pay $90, just have it picked up? I can't imagine there being that much trash, so I don't know. I don't know. We'll see. But, but anyway, I do believe trash will be handled by Parks and Rec, and I don't know if we need a portage john for two hours either, but... You think so? Well, if we get it for two hours, we should have it for a month for $105, you know, so.
What do we pay for the...
Kiwanis pays $80 for the day of the 4th of July. And I think it's more than two hours that we have it. I think it's for the whole day, but it's $80 that we pay.
Okay. That was an approximate cost, so I don't, I don't know, but I'm sure they'll end up with a portage john there somehow. Maybe we could get it donated.
I could bring a couple of trash cans if that might help, you know.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I've got one and...
I think I have two I might be able to use, bring over, you know, regular, bigger, bigger ones.
Yeah.
Fill...
Anyway, save a little money, and so we'll try to do this inexpensively. And as far as the printing cost for the flyers that you see in here, I bought the paper, and we've got a copier downstairs. I'm happy to pay the per copy cost. It's like going to cost 15 bucks, not $300, so.
Yeah, I would rather put the print costs instead of putting money towards print cost. I would rather put it towards advertising cost on Facebook because it's a lot cheaper. You can get, you can get a week's worth of going out to 3,000 people for 30 bucks on Facebook.
Okay, but, but wait, I mean...
Well, yeah, you have to keep it local.
I'm not asking for any township funds here for this thing, you know.
Okay, that's what I didn't know what this was.
Yeah, we're trying to figure out ways to not spend money, you know, on this, and we're getting a lot of donations, so, you know, I'm doing the flyers and then...
If you need help with Facebook, I can help you with Facebook.
Okay. Thank you. And if anybody wants to donate pumpkins for the kids to color on, we might have some pumpkins. Otherwise, they'll have something else to do. Living Water is intending to help out, I believe. So we'll have the community involved in this event again, and it'll be a lot of fun for the kids. So not asking for any funds tonight, because I believe we'll have some of that handled by Parks and Rec.
Not to overextend Kiwanis, but for pumpkins, I think we do have...
He didn't grow them this year.
Oh, they didn't grow them this year?
No. No. But I was mentioning, we might be able to go down two blocks. Sometimes they, you can get a lot of pumpkins for a reasonable price, and I'd be willing if we wanted to do that, to probably donate the pumpkins and a pickup truck, might need a couple. So, I mean, they were pretty inexpensive, but our pumping grower didn't grow pumpkins, so sure.
Okay, I'll put you down in a minute. Okay, thank you.
So we're talking about nobody.
So we don't need to expend any money on this. It's going to be volunteer and donations. So if any, anyone on the board would like to contribute anything to anything, I think we're, we're pretty good with this whole thing. Okay. Next item, Northfield Human Services request to use public safety building. Mr. Ains, are you handling this item?
This is basically coming through the chief using the facility here, and it lists the dates and times, and asking for approval from the board to utilize the space.
Okay. Okay. And this is something that happens every year, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I will make a motion to allow the Northfield Human Services Food Pantry to use the upstairs portion of the police station for the Christmas Adopt a Family and Toys for Tots programs.
I support.
Everybody supports.
Okay. Motion by Chakwe. Okay, who was the first supporter?
Pick one.
Otto?
Otto.
Arm Russell.
I do have a question from Mr. Mainz. Mr. Mainz, I'm on the Northfield Human Services Board. Is it okay if I vote on this one?
I would probably abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Chakwe and support by Otto, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And we have one abstention. Okay, that's noted. Ms. Elnak? Okay, thank you very much. Next item is the organization chart.
I didn't get one.
It was not in the packet, and I did mail it out, emailed it out to everyone, I think. Mr. Dockett, they were supposed to get you one. If we don't have it, then let's just table it.
I'd like to table it.
Okay. Table.
I think there's some things that need to be adjusted on it yet, and I'd like to discuss that.
Yeah, it got emailed.
It got emailed, so...
On Friday.
Well, if there's something that needs to be talked about, about it, well...
We can do that now, or?
Might as well do it now and then we can just make changes.
So we can get it fixed. What, what's the issue?
Let's see.
Do you have more?
This came in after the packet was prepared, so then there was, and then it got emailed out.
Yeah, I was traveling last week, so I could not do this.
Okay.
Should it be that the consultants and the attorney and the department heads report to the manager? I guess that's, that's, will probably be something. So we have the consultants, the attorney, and the department heads report to the manager. Of course, the manager reports to the board and speaks for the board.
Township attorneys don't report to the township manager. They report to, to the board.
And the manager and the public service, safety director needs to report to the board?
Yes.
Yes. The consultants, public safety director, township manager, and township attorney.
Well, who reports to the manager? Should not the consultants and at least department heads report to the manager?
No. We've never had it like that.
No, okay.
Yeah, the depart, we have the departments at the bottom reporting up to the manager. Bill has always reported into the township board.
To the board, right.
The Police Department, Fire Department, ground supervisor, which is a new position just recently.
Reports to the manager?
Reports to the Public Safety Director.
Oh, Public Safety.
Has always done that.
Okay.
And then the consultants, is the township board hires them.
The board's not always available, maybe they need to report to the manager? I don't know. Because the board is pretty much available just twice a month.
They can certainly talk to them, but in the end, they have to report to the board.
Yeah, okay.
There's a lot of collaboration that goes on, I mean, obviously, you know.
The only thing, the only one I moved out was under the committees. The Board of Review was under the committees, and I moved that out because that really is Marlene's statutory duty, is to, to look over, you know, to be over the Board of Review.
Is that correct, Mr. Mainz?
They're, they're appointed by the board, though, like the other committees.
Right.
So they don't really report to her because they don't answer to her.
Oh, okay.
That was my thinking there.
Okay, well, then we can move that back.
I can understand why you would have it where you have it, but I think properly it would go with the others.
Okay, we can move it back.
I'm the secretary to the Board of Review. I mean officially, I mean, not really, but I mean officially.
Report yourself.
Yes.
I just had a, Madam, what was the asterisk and what's the dotted lines again?
The asterisk means that those are the committees and the rest are the commissions that don't have asterisks. The dotted lines, what did we say that is? I'm sorry.
The dotted lines are to show groups as opposed to an individual possession.
So can we just put that down there? You know, dotted lines, represents a group, and then as opposed to a position, just like our attorney, Ms. Mainz, said.
Well, why not a star, something like on the planning? I mean, why just leave it blank? I mean, if we had a, maybe we should have a, an asterisk and a star there and say, this is this and this is this, I mean, we're not mind readers.
You mean like a key?
Yeah. I mean, we're not.
That's what I said.
That's right.
Right, yep, she said that, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you.
Okay.
So we're not voting on this?
No, we're...
Okay, all right.
It's going to be corrected.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay.
And when we do, we'll get it in our packet, is that correct?
Okay. The next item is...
Did you answer that, Ms., Mr. Dockett had a question?
Oh, you did?
When, when we do get this straightened out, we will get a, we will get...
In the packet? If it comes in time.
Well, we got two weeks.
Right, well, hopefully we'll be in the packet. Okay, the next item is the North, no, acceptance of Health Department grant. And, well, we might as well start from the beginning, although...
What's the...
Ms. Elnak originally heard about this grant and then had Mr. Ains working on it, so who wants to talk about it? Mr. Ains?
Thank you. When I talked to the county Health Department, they said the money needs to be used for improvements to health, physical fitness, nutrition, kind of a broad category of things. Apparently, the budget year with federal funds ends at the end of September. They told me they had $5,000 that had not been expended, that if the township wanted to utilize the $5,000 and could do so before the end of September, that they would be willing to provide that to us. So what I've given to you is a list of possible uses at the civic center and in the parks, and also, Mr. Dockett had talked about the well at the public gardens, and so we would be able to accomplish those items, I believe, this week. I had talked to the attorneys today further about it, and, and he has a way of making the motion so that it's with consent of the legal.
Okay. Well... Go ahead.
The, the issue on this one was, we, we had received the documents on this yesterday, some of them, some of them today, and so we were just concerned with having enough time to get our arms around it before the board made a motion tonight. So we would just recommend that the motion be subject to review and approval by the township attorney.
Okay. Ms. Otto? With that, would you be able to review them before the 30th? Because we're on a deadline.
Yeah, I, I think that it's our, our goal to turn it around absolutely as quickly as possible, just... Yeah, I, I think that it's our, our goal to turn it around absolutely as quickly as possible, just.
And do we have to have an actual check for each one of these issued or at least have a purchase order for each one of these? In order to get the funding?
We have to show that we have made arrangements to make the purchase.
Okay.
I don't know that we've had to actually have issued a check. But basically, these would be coming from several different sources that are in agreement with providing those prior to Friday. And so it's on that basis.
Okay, Mr. Dockett.
Are there any charges that cost the, us anything to get this grant?
Now, that's what I was talking with the attorneys about. They were concerned that there not be any commitments or strings or anything like that. And I had already eliminated recommending against doing anything with personnel because that triggers all the prevailing wage and living wages and so forth. So this is just buying pieces of equipment, picnic tables, tables, et cetera, as well as the one well.
Are there any, sure, any cost to the township for this grant? I have the same question. I didn't, I didn't hear.
There's no match to this.
Is there any cost to the township?
Not aware of any cost.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right, Ms. Bellager.
Thanks for trying to, um, you know, to look for ways to utilize this without the matching this, matching that, and so on and so forth. I don't support any public grants, as grants are a scheme used to expand the size and intrusion of unelected bureaucracies of government. If they didn't take the money from us in the first place, we would have more here right now to use on these processes. But I want to mention that I appreciate the manager, Steve, trying to use this most effectively. Thank you.
Are you also?
You're welcome.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to accept the $5,000 from Washtenaw County for a new hand washing sink for the community senior center. This is so they can do, for a commercial kitchen type situation. Replacement of their food warmer, which has rotted out on the bottom. Replacement of four folding tables, pump and parts to repair the well at the community gardens. And so that we can grow food for the community. And picnic tables.
Oh, sorry, missed it.
Yep, and picnic tables, estimated 14 to be used throughout the township on the community park.
Awesome, I support.
Okay.
So real quick, what type of, what type of picnic tables are they? The same kind?
I don't know.
They're not wood with anchors on them.
I went.
No anchors.
Excuse me, I went to the closest location, which was Tractor Supply. And they had one in stock here and they have four down in Celine and so forth scattered around. So basically, they have them on sale.
What type are they? Wood or are they?
They're plastic.
Plastic, okay.
How, I'm wondering how well they'll hold up, you know?
Yeah.
Because some of them are very expensive.
Yeah, I guess I would call them PVC then, if you'd rather that term than plastic. But regardless of, you know, whether they still have them available, we would utilize these to get the picnic tables. And I'd put approximately because we can't go over the 5,000, so.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Zelnak.
Madam Chair, I mean, I think there will be some cost to the township because we'll have to pay to get the sink installed. We'll have to pay to get the well installed. So there's some things that we'll have to pay to get installed.
Have to pay for what?
To get the well installed. I mean, this is to buy the material for the well. This is to buy the material for the sink, so we'll have to pay someone to install the well and we'll have to pay someone to install the sink.
I thought that 550 included installing the well. No?
I was just, I, I'm looking for clarification.
Right.
Okay. As I had talked to Mr. Dockett previously, we have an employee down at the treatment plant who used to be a well driller.
Still is a well driller.
And so the intent here is to buy the piece of equipment. And the treatment plant superintendent has assured me it'll take only a short time to install it once we have it on site. As far as the other equipment, it would be a matter of with the sink. You know, when do we install it? Where do we install it? You have to have approval of the county health department as to where it's located and things of that nature. So we're basically just trying to get it on site, so then we can plan ahead with them to see what needs to be done.
Thank you.
Okay, so there will be some additional costs that won't be excessive in associated with this.
Yeah, I'm not sure there'll be anything in this, still in this calendar year. It may still be in the budget year. But I'm also expecting that the county, since we're helping them out by spending this money in a timely fashion, that they will be open to further requests for funding, but we're not assured of that.
And I, I just want to state that, that they came to us. They reached out to Lenore and I in an email, and that's how the ball got rolling. And it wasn't, we were seeking it. They came to us because we were on a committee, on a different committee with them. So it was very nice that that all happened. And they were considering us.
One added comment, if we didn't take it, they were going to give it to a different entity.
Right.
Give it to who?
They were going to give it to a different entity, someone, you know, within the county, be it a school, be it a different township.
Well, you guys get a gold star.
Well, this will give us much more capability at the senior center, too, as far as serving meals. So anyway, so I made the motion to accept the $5,000, subject to review and approval of the township attorney. And so that was Chockley. And who supported this? Oh, Ms. Zelnak? No, Chick, no, who, who made the motion? Not me. Ch- Chick? Chick. Chick made the motion? And Chick supported it. Thank you. It's been a long day. Okay, there we go. All right. Here we go. I know we're going to need a roll call on this. Yep, yep, roll call vote, please.
Manley, yes. Chick?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Dockett?
Yes.
Zelnak?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes.
Bellager?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right. The next item is resolution 17574, residential opt-out of smart meters. And this was brought to the board by trustee Bellager. Would you like to make a motion for this, Ms. Bellager?
Like to make a motion that township passed resolution 17-574. Pretty much, it's just, when I say it's, doesn't have any authority, but it does speak to other governing bodies, saying that residents in our township have concerns and the township government of Northfield here recognizes their concerns regarding the smart meters and the invasion of privacy or health concerns that people have. Thank you.
So we have a motion by Ms. Bellager. Do we have a support?
I'll support.
Okay, and we have a support by Ms. Zelnak. Okay, now we have an opportunity for discussion. Did you have anything more you'd like to say about it, Ms. Bellager or Ms.?
Um, there's quite a few other, I guess there's 40 or more municipalities throughout the state that have adopted similar resolutions. And the language here was collected from a few of the other, other ones throughout Michigan. House Bill 4220 is in the energy committee right now. And it addresses some things of the nature like consumer choice and meter choice and so forth. There was an earlier House Bill Resolution 4916, I believe it was. That was in the previous session. And this is pretty much picking up the continuation of that and with a couple of changes. I don't know if there's anybody else. There's maybe somebody in the audience that might want to speak on this if they would like as well. I don't know.
I just had a comment. Is this something we should have our attorney just review before we, you know?
Well, a couple of things. I don't know, what I'd like to know is, number one, if House Bill 4220 isn't, hasn't been passed yet. Has it been passed?
No, it's, like I say, it's in the energy committee.
So why would we put it in a resolution if it hasn't been passed? That's the only thing I'm asking. I'm just asking.
Just saying that we support that, the consumer choice aspect.
And what I'd like people to understand is, is if we, underneath that, it talks about that Northfield Township Board supports the ability of its DTE customers to opt out of the smart meter program. This, it doesn't give them the authority, the authorization, or, I mean.
No.
We support it, but we can't do anything about it.
Exactly, so this is.
If DTE tells them, you can opt out.
Exactly. This is simply saying that we support our constituents having choice, although, like I said, this has no authority.
It has no teeth.
Right. This is merely saying that we recognize that our constituents are having issues with this and we're letting other governing bodies know that, hey, there's people here that are having a problem with this. So it helps to give that information to the Michigan Public Service Commission and the energy committees in both houses.
I would just recommend that our attorney look at it, just to make sure it doesn't put us in any.
Have you already reviewed it? I thought that you did.
We, as a practical matter, trustee Bellager is correct that there's not really any legal effect to the resolution. So realistically, I did review it, but my review was really only, is this in an appropriate form for a resolution?
Okay, and, but you don't see there's any implication for the township board or township as a whole for approving it?
As I say, I, I can't really review it for that. There's not, there's not any legal effect. There may be political effects, which are sort of beyond my ability to comment on.
Right, all right.
But it's in a legally appropriate form for adoption.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, anyone else? Ms. Manley, did you have a comment?
Last I missed it. What is House Bill 4220?
Oh, House Bill 4220 is, it's, it has a lot, various provisions in it, but the main thing of interest to the consumers, which why, what stimulated this resolution is that it offers meter, analog meter choice to consumers. That's pretty much the biggest deal about it. That's what people would like, to be able to have the vintage, traditional glass and metal analog meters. Because they are, some people, they have health concerns. There has been some, there definitely is concern with privacy with the new digital meters being able to monitor people's usage, their time of day usage, when they're home, when they're not home, and when they're awake and so on and so forth. And so this is a concern for a lot of people. And there has been some other things, too, which.
Can we just get that bill attached to this, so we have reference to it?
We could.
In the future.
Or I can include it with the next, I could just team out there by the like or include it with the next.
Well, my concern about it was that in the now therefore, the second now therefore from the bottom of the first page, now we're starting to tell them that, what they can't charge for opting out. So if the analog meters are more expensive to repair and, and install and to send people out to read them, and they're incurring additional costs for that, now they can't pass that on?
Would you like me to bring this back without the, without penalty?
I think that would, that would help me out a lot.
Okay, I could do that.
Because I'd hate to try to dictate them.
We can't dictate to DTE their business.
Yeah, like I said, this is simply, this has no authority, but I could bring it back without that.
Without that part.
Definitely. And that's the second paragraph right from the bottom. It says, "Without penalty." I can scratch that.
Well, I don't even know if you can, if you need to scratch out the whole thing. I mean, it reads fine. Now therefore, it be resolved that Northfield Township Board supports the ability of its DTE customers to opt out of the smart meter program on their homes, period.
Okay. Okay, I got that note here. Okay, thanks.
So this will, you made the motion, but are you withdrawing it to bring the?
We could postpone for the, if, if it is better that I adjust it, I can postpone it and bring it back in the next meeting.
And if you can bring us the House Bill 4222, as Ms. Manley has asked.
I can do that.
That'd be great, thank you.
Part of the provisions. We'd like to see the rest of the provisions if we're making a resolution. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So it's withdrawn, the motion is withdrawn. Mr. Dockett?
I will, I will support this when it comes. But I would like to mention that I have a house that's about 1,700 feet from Main Street. And several years ago, I, I, they, they cut off my electricity because I didn't plow the driveway because I was in Florida and blah, blah, blah. And they put that, this was like 10 years ago or more, they put one of them meters on my house, which saved me a lot of problems because they, you know, so I've had them before. But I will support it when, when it comes back. But they're handy for some people.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item is the training budget for township manager and controller. Mr. Ains.
In the budget that you adopted this year, you had money set aside for, in my category, which is myself and the controller for training. And in my contract with you, it says that you will give prior approval of any training that I request. Otherwise, I don't get reimbursed. Yes. So the controller had approached me. She'd been working with the treasurer and her staff about taking some online classes. She started those now using some of the treasurer's money. But we needed to determine how much was left that I could match and help the controller to get that training. And so I thought it'd be appropriate to bring up the balance of the year. In the meantime, the first one on the list is through the Michigan Township Association. And one of the board members passed along the same brochure I had, which is being scheduled in Chelsea. It's the closest of several locations. So it's a one day, it's not overnight, it's local, and it's the closest location. And then the second one that I mentioned here is the one that I attend, usually the Michigan Municipal Executives Group. And this year, they happen to be in Ann Arbor. So again, you don't have the overnight stay, you don't have the distance for the travel. So I'm requesting approval of those two and then allocating the $94 remaining towards the controller. And then I just threw in the bottom part, in case something came up in the future, that I could bring it back without you saying that I hadn't presented you with the whole year's possible events. But those are not until after the first of the year. Therefore, there's plenty of time if we were to go to any of those.
Do we need a motion? Are you looking for a motion?
He wants a budget adjustment, I think, so.
Well, it's, it's authorization for me to attend. It's in the budget.
Right.
Right.
He doesn't need off, he doesn't need.
Yeah, it's already in the budget, so I was just wondering, do we need approval?
Right.
Okay, so, okay.
I don't even think we have to approve the funds for him to go, as long as it's covered in the budget. It's only when he come, when it has the new conferences that come up.
Because what was, again, Ms. Ains, what did you say on the contract?
Well, it's, my reading of the contract I have with the township is that if I attend something prior to getting approval of the board, then I will not get reimbursed for any of the expenses.
So I'm just, okay.
But if I come to you and get approval in advance, then you reimburse me for that.
So I was just wondering how we give them approval without a motion?
I can make a motion to approve the, the training classes as outlined here for.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, and second. You know, if it's in there, we're just approving what he's present, what Mr. Ains has presented us.
Because normally, we never did this before at all.
I know, it's like approval.
I mean, we were told about it.
Yeah.
And everything, when it happened, but.
How do you give approval without a motion?
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Bellager and support by Ms. Zelnak to approve the.
I have a question.
The conferences. Do you want to state that? Just approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah.
These.
The training budget as presented by the township manager.
Okay.
Or the training, not the budget, because it's in the budget, the training expenditures as, as presented by the township manager.
Okay, great. All right, so we have a motion. Do we need a roll call on, on Mr. Dockett?
I just want to clarify this. I, I don't understand the, it says, there is $500 in the budget for training for both the controller and myself. Is that $1,000?
No, it's 500.
Oh, okay, well, I, I couldn't understand that.
Yeah, it might be confusing, too, that I, I mentioned there's 500 in the travel count that's separate from the conference. So that'll provide for reimbursement of mileage to go to those.
Oh, one more question. Because it's in Ann Arbor, I mean, are you, do you get mileage for, for this?
Under the contract, if I go outside of the township boundaries, then I get reimbursed for mileage.
Okay.
So most, so far, I haven't billed you for anything.
Okay, well, I just wonder, because Ann Arbor's about the same distance on, as it is to here. Just asking. it is to here, so, just asking.
Yeah, the only time I've left on business was to go see the attorneys, so I didn't bother charging you for going to write.
Okay.
Uh, but, but this one is for, uh, four days, is that five, five, four days? Thirty, thirty first, first, and second. Is that right? Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Is that correct?
Which one?
Yeah, the second meeting, Michigan municipal one, it usually starts on a Tuesday night and ends on a Friday morning, but because it's in Ann Arbor, it will not involve any overnight stays.
Yeah, I understand, okay. But it, but it's a four day deal. Thank you.
So, are we also approving the, the bottom two as well, or just the top two? Cause that's not what was in the motion.
Well, he wanted to come back with, and the event money becomes available.
If you need a friendly amendment, it would be just the top two, the ones that he's asked for.
Yeah.
That's all I'm asking for.
Okay.
That's just to inform you that if there's money in the future, there may be a couple others that would be a benefit.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we need a roll call on this?
This is, this is, you want us to approve the training expenditures for, for the MTA on the road, and...
Yeah, that would be even a better motion, thank you, Lisa.
And... It was Bellinger and Zelenak.
I was the support, Zelenak was.
Yep. Okay, so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, we're good. Um, the next item is the proclamation congratulating the Kiwanis Club of Whitmore Lake for seventy years of exceptional service to the Northfield Township community.
Yeah.
Um, do you want me to read this whole thing, or just the, the now therefore? I think it's educational, I should read it to the whole, everybody hears. Okay. Whereas Kiwanis International is one of the largest service organizations in the world, with more than six hundred thousand members of all ages and abilities, in more than eighty countries, and whereas the first Kiwanis Club started its service in Detroit, Michigan, USA, in nineteen fifteen, and the Kiwanis Club of Whitmore Lake was formed on March twenty-seventh, nineteen forty-seven, and whereas the members of Kiwanis Club of Whitmore Lake are devoted to improving the world, one child and one community at a time, by seeking primacy to the humans and spiritual, rather than the material values of life, and whereas Kiwanis Club of Whitmore Lake supports the well-being of the people of Northfield Township by the many programs that it supports, such as the Fourth of July Parade, the Five K and Ten K Runs, Feeding the Sheep Food Ministry to children in need, scholarships for Whitmore Lake Schools graduating seniors, school clubs and organizations, and numerous events and projects to enrich the community, and whereas, in addition to improving the lives of children in Northfield Township and in communities around the world, Kiwanis Club members promote the development of community leaders, positive role models, intercultural understanding and cooperation, and opportunities for fellowship, personal growth, professional development, and community service, and their service will continue to have a positive impact on our community and citizens. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Northfield Township Board of Trustees congratulates the Kiwanis Club of Whitmore Lake for seventy years of meaningful service to our homes, our schools, and the community of Northfield Township, and thank the members of Kiwanis for their unselfish dedication and commitment to the betterment of our community. So, I would like to make a motion to adopt this proclamation.
I support.
Okay, motion by Chalkley and support by Bellinger.
I think the Kiwanis is a wonderful, a wonderful organization we have in the township. We're truly blessed to have Kiwanis and wonder, just an abundance of wonderful people that support it and, and volunteer through it.
And we have two of them on our board, too.
Yes, so, Mr. Ains, do we have to abstain on this one, too?
If, if you believe that you have a conflict, or if the appearance of impropriety, then you should abstain.
Okay.
I don't think I have appearance of impropriety on this one.
I thought it had to be a pecuniary, uh, interest.
It's a financial, yeah.
You certainly have no direct pecuniary interest, I can't...
Yeah, I think on this one, I'm going to vote for this.
Trust me, we do not get paid.
No, we donate lots.
We donate a lot of money.
And other things, yes.
Okay, Mr. Dockett?
And time.
If I may add to that, we also have two members, sorry, Mr. Dockett, um, we also have two members in the club, in particular, Mr. George Brown, who's been a Kiwanis member for forty-five years. Started out in Melvindale, but has been in Whitmore Lake for a very long time, and then we have Phil...
He created, didn't he?
Yeah, he created the Key Club.
The Key Club.
Um, here.
And his name, and, and his name, the key, uh, the annual Key Leaders Conference is named after him.
Cause he was instrumental in creating that, I believe. And then in addition to that, we have Phil Rutledge, who has been a member of the Whitmore Lake Kiwanis Club for forty years. So, at our celebration, we also honored those two members for Legion of Honor, so I'd like to, amongst all our other members, but in particular, those two have been serving the community and Kiwanis for a very long time.
Okay, great. Okay, so the motion has been made. Oh, Mr. Dockett?
I, uh, this is, uh, for Sarah, the dog shop. Uh, I've had some people come in my store and ask me how the Kiwanis opened their store on Main Street, down, down where the Whitmore Lake, next to the Whitmore Lake Bank. They asked me to get copies from the township, uh, and, that they, that they turned into the township offices and got an okay to start their store. They asked me to get copies from the planning commission and the planner, McKenna, and turn them into them, so they could, it says, all these problems that the businesses are having lately, uh, they would like to see how some businesses, uh, some businesses' sales, uh, have no problem opening. So, I am asking for the paperwork that the township has for the files, and the files, and I'm asking for the paperwork that the planner has, so I can let these people know how to get a business open in this town. I don't, I'm asking, but I don't expect to get anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did she file a FOIA?
I don't know.
Did she file a FOIA for that information?
I don't know, excuse me.
Okay, well, anyway, we can take a look. Okay. Alright, so we have the, the proclamation, and it's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, it passes unanimously. Alright, the next item is the electricity supplier.
We have nothing on that?
I don't, no, I don't have anything.
Well, we put this down, just to alert you that we're looking at the electrical supplier, because the township opted out of DTE, went with an independent party, and whether we should return to DTE, or go ahead and continue with the other one. So, I just wanted you to be aware, we'd be bringing information back at a future meeting on that.
Okay, yeah, okay, great. Now, we...
Pretty hard.
Okay, now we have...
I agree.
Opportunity for second call to the public. Would anyone like to come and speak tonight, at this time? Welcome. Name, address, three minutes. Thank you. Turn it on, yeah. Yep.
No. Social Security.
There we go. Joan Steyer, Six Mile Road. Just a quick clarification from Ms. Manley. After Chuck sat down about talking about code things, I understood you to say that you checked with somebody, and he said the hole in the wall meant code, because it was low voltage?
Yeah, that's...
And I got to thinking about it, and I'm thinking, does that really make sense? I was harking back to when we had to rebuild our house after it burned, and all the permits and the inspections that we had. And an inspector would not have left that there, he would have tagged it, so it would have had to have been fixed before we got a final inspection. So, it leads me to say, maybe you've never had a final inspection?
I'll look into it farther, but that was straight from Kurt Wyland.
Okay, and I, it was Kurt Wyland that said it?
Yeah, yep.
Already? And it, it, low voltage, seems like you'd have to have a cover or something, but...
Yeah. Yeah, we can look at, get a cover on it at least.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Mary Devlin, nine two one one, Brookside Drive. Earlier tonight, you were discussing about the gentleman with all the vehicles. Well, this past Sunday, in the Livingston Daily, on the very front page, he was on there, a picture of him and his cars, and it took up the whole, half a page, and then on another page. The thing of it is, the gentleman was given the opportunity to get rid of the cars at a rate of twenty-five per month, whether he sold them or had them towed, which would take about a year. So, I don't think that's overburdening the gentleman at all, since he was in violation to begin with. The second thing I want to talk about is grants. If it wasn't for grants, a lot of our children would not be able to go to college. Without grants, some people would not be able to get a home. Without grant, some things in this township would not have been available, and the bottom line I want to say is, I'm sorry, not everything is about the almighty dollar. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Shannon, and I live on Main Street. And, um, two, two things. One is, I hope that the board will support the resolution about smart meters. I, I think you all have a pen in your hand, and there are three things that I'd like you to write down. One is, Take Back Your Power. Take Back Your Power. That is, a lot of you may not be aware of why people have concerns about smart meters, and these are very real concerns. Take Back Your Power is a free documentary, which you can see on YouTube, which explains very, very coherently why people are concerned about these meters. The other, another thing that I want you to write down is the Internet of Things. This is a, this is a real thing that's happening. The day will come when everything we can buy, everything we wear, every piece of furniture, every piece of clothing, every appliance, will be trackable, will be on the internet. So, um, we are moving to the point where every, that, all of those are data points, and there's a lot of money to be made with all that data, and it means the absolute elimination of any privacy. So, if you just Google, or I use duck dot go, because I don't trust Google anymore, but just look on the internet for Internet of Things, to get some information about where that's heading. And, uh, before I moved back to Whitmore Lake, to be with my mom, I lived in Massachusetts, and I was right near Massachusetts Institute of Technology, which is, which is one of the institutions where a lot of these things are being planned. So, they are going full steam ahead with this kind of technology, and our privacy, our health, be damned. So, um, again, that's my opinion, after doing the research, and I encourage you folks to also do the research, that, so that you understand why, even though this resolution, it doesn't really have any teeth, right now, the power company really has us over a barrel, but I think it's important that we show that, hey, we're not, we, we support people who aren't on board with it. And finally, um, the, the last term, you might be familiar with it, it's called regulatory capture. And that is when, um, a, a, an entity that is supposed to regulate, um, something like the monopolies, the power monopolies, um, or the drugs, or anything like that, when so many industry people, either through contributions, or actually people who are sympathetic to those industries, sit on the board, they are no longer doing what they need to do, they're not protecting the citizens, they are in fact, they're acting for the industry that they're supposed to regulate. And I, um, I give testimony on HB 4220, because I do think it's a very important piece of legislation. And what I witnessed is that the, um, the board that's supposed to, uh, regulate power monopolies in Michigan, I, I have to say, they, they pretty much demonstrated contempt for those of us who came to speak. So, I, my sense, when I see what they're doing, is, is they've probably been captured by the industry. So, that's another reason why it's important.
Fifteen seconds more, Ms. Shannon.
Um, and so, one last thing, the other issue was, uh, when Ton Belliger raised a concern about the bylaws, um, she brought up some laws, I wasn't aware of them, and I say this as a person who really supports green space, and I didn't know about those laws, but they sounded important, and yet, the way that everyone else on the board acted, it was as, as if she hadn't spoken at all. You all seemed to ignore what she raised. And so, I, I think, and I want to see greens place, I want to see it maintained, I'm concerned that her concerns weren't addressed at all. So, I think that, um, possibly the attorney needs to take a look, and as do all of you, the laws that she brought up, I, I don't know what they are, but I think it's, um, I, I think that by ignoring her, that was inappropriate.
Thank you for speaking out.
Chuck Steyer, Six Mile Road. In your discussion on ordinance and traffic violations, and what would be reported to the board, and what would not, number one, both are matters of public record. Bill Wagner includes in the packet that is available online, and you can look back at packets for the last X number of years, and you'll see police activity. Many communities have in the local newspaper, a thing called the police blotter, and the general attitude amongst educated law enforcement people is, if you don't want your name in the paper, don't violate. You know, I don't have any sympathy for the bad guys in the neighborhood that are getting busted for speeding, or something more serious. The other thing is, um, police activity, any citizen can do a FOIA request and get that information, and any citizen can sign up at the desk downstairs and get a NICSOL email, whenever Bill puts them out.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, NICSOL's a good thing. I, I sign up, it, it does, it'll say the block, it won't tell the specific home that got broken into, or things like that, but NICSOL is a great thing for traveling.
Hi, Dave Gordon, fifty-five, fifty-eight, Hellner Road. The, uh, the board is having a retreat here on Thursday. Can you tell me whether or not that's going to be videotaped or recorded?
It's not, we're not planning to videotape.
Well, I, I was hoping you would, because you're talking about communication, and this is the kind of thing where if people can't attend, then they won't know what happened. That is a breakdown of communication. And it's unfortunate, because I, I imagine that you believe that this to be a very important meeting, where you're going to be talking about goals and objectives. I think it's important that the public knows what you're saying. So, please consider that. The, um, there was a piece of paper generated by trustee Belliger. Her animosity toward the Land Preservation Committee is really shocking to me, especially since, uh, she says she favors preservation. When I look at this document, I had a chance to look it over, um, there's, there's problems, because you start by saying, uh, that the board casually created the Farmland and Natural Areas Preservation Committee. That's editorializing, and I think it's disrespectful of the board, I don't believe it was done casually. That's not a fact, that's just you commenting, and I think it's disrespectful of the board and of the people who support preservation. Number two, you say, by definition, the committee or commission has created, generated a report, or accomplished a goal, and... or accomplished a goal and then be dissolved. I've looked up the definition of committee and commission, and there's nothing about dissolved in there. It says, in the Webster's Dictionary, a group of people who are chosen to do a particular job or to make decisions about something. It says nothing about dissolving. That's, again, something that you say is a definition, which in fact, it isn't. Then you accuse them of overreaching because they are going to be directly challenging the duties of the planning and zoning commissions. I think it'd be helpful to attend one of the agenda, one of the MTA things about planning and zoning, because we don't have any zoning here which preserves anything. Zonings change, master plans change, ordinances change. What the Land Preservation Committee is attempting to do is preserve property in perpetuity, forever. That doesn't change. It's a legal binding contract that sets aside this property. There are no laws that we have in our community here, zoning or ordinances, that preserve property, like what is being done in all these other communities around us. So, I know you'd like this to happen through donations, but what happens is, if you depend on donations to get these things accomplished, then you'll have a society where rich communities have nice parks, good schools, and poor communities have nothing. I was really encouraged to see the rest of the board stand up in favor of what the work is being done by the Land Preservation Community, and I think they have lots more work to do. This is a priority of the residents, and I think they're doing great work, so thank you all for that.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
My name is Sharon Kinnick. I'm at 954 on Main Street. I think the previous speaker's attack on Ms. Ballinger was completely uncalled for.
Ms. Kinnick, could you hold it right up to your mouth so that they can hear you on TV? Okay.
Oh.
Thank you.
I didn't know I was on TV. I think the previous gentleman's attack on Ms. Ballinger was completely uncalled for. He could have said the same thing in a different manner that did not call her out. I, for one, support what she said. Maybe the Preservation Committee is, is a good idea. I took a quick look at the bylaws or the committee, whatever it is they're making up. That's an awful lot of stuff, governing some group that's, that's just a committee-type person. Why not have them do a mission statement, which would say what they want to do, but not put down so much? That gives them a lot of authority. And whether it's perceived or real, it does start them on a way towards power. Anyway, I support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if that's every, is that everyone for call to the public? Okay. Board member comments. We now have an opportunity. I'm going to start with Ms. Chick.
First thing I want to say is happy birthday to Kiwanis. They do wonderful work, really, really. The community would not be the same without them. They're wonderful people, and George Brown, and I don't want to name people, because then you're naming people, so, but I know the people in the Kiwanis, and they're wonderful people. So, anyway, I'll go there. I wanted to speak to the comment about that the board ignored Ms. Trustee Bellinger's remarks. We didn't ignore them, we listened, we accepted what she had to say. Because we don't comment, doesn't mean that we don't have a response or have thoughts on it. As part of our responsibility as trustees, when we conduct our meetings, when someone speaks, we respect what they have to say, but it doesn't mean we have to comment on it. We don't want to have conflict at the board. We try really hard not to have conflict at the board meetings, so I think a lot of us kind of stick to that. But we did not ignore what she had to say. That's why we have the attorney actually going through the bylaws to make sure that there's no issues, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Otto?
So, I also wanted to comment on, on the response for Ton Bellinger. Ton's comments are taken in consideration like any other board member. We look at it as respect, we listen, we take it in consideration, and again, just because we don't respond, that doesn't mean that we're not taking it in consideration. But I would like to say, the reason maybe for the non-response is that these comments were brought up in previous board meetings. We have heard these comments before, and we have taken them in consideration before, when we had to vote on whether this committee was going to stay a committee or not be a committee. So, since the board already made that motion, for me, that's why I did not respond, because the board already made the motion to keep it as a committee. There's no reason for us to backpedal and decide otherwise. We took, when that motion or that decision was made at that time, I took everything that she took, everything that she said in consideration.
We don't need to.
Actually, I was the one that went through and identified what things needed to be taken out, because, yes, I do believe that, that some of them are going beyond what we considered the board to be. So, I'll just leave it at that. I did go through, I do contract reviews all the time, and I went through it, and my comments will be taken and given to our attorney to review.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Manley?
I guess to kind of repeat what they said. Again, Ton, I didn't mean to dismiss your comments, and I think the fact that we decided we're not approving anything today, it's going to go back to the committee and to the attorney to get reviewed, so I don't feel that we ignored it. I think we're going to look over it again and try to get our wording correct, so. And again, thanks to the Preservation Committee, you have my full support.
Okay, Ms. Bellinger.
Yeah, I want to, I'm curious on that road name change, if maybe we could find something that could ease the residents on that street, because that is going to be quite a task. I mean, they've been living there for how many years with a name of, all the identification, everything is one name, and now, all of a sudden, they got to change it? I don't know what possibilities can exist with that, but that's curious. It was mentioned about, maybe the township could, you know, follow the resolu, make a resolution to follow the same ordinances that it, what do I want to say, demands of residents and businesses, and that's, that's something to consider, to be really aware of what we're doing as a township with different things, even the property of the North Village, or like was mentioned, the exposed, even if it's low voltage of wires here in the meeting room. Now, that's something to consider, to respect our own ordinance, ourself as a township. I'm very happy to hear that October 22nd, we will have trunk or treat. This is wonderful. Congratulations to Kiwanis for 70 wonderful years. Let's hope at least in their 70 wonderful years. With regards to this Farmland Committee, Natural Areas Preservation Committee, there is definitely, this is two times now that they've come to the board attempting to overreach their, you know, overreach, simply, this was an advisory committee, and now they're trying to give themselves powers and duties. So, we really need to look at this, examine this as a board, because how it is, you know, when they get, the camel gets their nose under the tent, they say, what happens? So, this is something to really be careful on. Thank you, everybody, for coming out to the meeting. We'll work on the smart meter resolution and bring that back for the next meeting with, along with House Bill 4220 attached. And thank you for attending. Good night.
Okay. Mr. Docket, do you have any comments?
Yeah, we do not need another outfit out there with a tin cup out. We have enough people here trying to come in front of us with the tin cup. I think we should buy and use local services and stores. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elna?
Just on the Land Preservation Committee, again, we were asked to do bylaws, and we brought them to the board for review. If that's not what the board wants us to work on, we need direction otherwise, but we were fulfilling an obligation that the board asked us to do, and that's what we did. And again, we, we take direction from the board, and I think bylaws are good, so people know the intent of the committee, both inside, outside, from the board perspective as well as the committee, so they understand what they're supposed to do as well, as well as the residents. So, I think it's a good first step, and we will be back with changes as recommended by the board and as reviewed by the attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to say that there's been a lot of disparaging remarks made about people and committees and groups, and, you know, I, it's inappropriate and it's unprofessional, and we need to serve with honor and integrity here, and I do really appreciate the work that all of our volunteers put into the township, you know, no matter what they're doing. And we can disagree, but we don't need to be disparaging to, especially our citizens out there. And I'd just like to caution you about that in the future. As far as the road name change goes, yeah, we should look at a Plan B, and I'll intend to do that tomorrow. Okay. So, thank you all very much for coming. Congratulations, Kiwanis, and have a good evening. Take care.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. So, move, two seconds. You don't need a second. You're.